Ms. Derwin, and I am welcoming you to the first Portola Valley Town Council of the Year, January 13, 2021, already an historic year. Let's see. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alfs.
Here.
Councilmember Wernikoff. Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Here.
Mayor Derwin.
Here. The next part of the agenda is oral communications. You may speak to us about anything on your mind, but we are not going to have a discussion about it. Are there any people who would like to speak under oral communications? Okay. Oh, wait. Yes, I see one hand. Monica Chaney.
Hi, this is Monica Chaney. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I just wanted to make a comment about the item on the agenda for the Gambier residents.
If I may, Mayor Monica, that would come under that item. So when that item comes up, you're welcome to speak then.
And it will be up soon.
Okay.
All righty, let's see. Are there any other hands up? I don't see any. Jeremy, do you see any that I'm missing?
No, no other hands are up. One hand just came up. It's Nan Shostak.
Hey, Nan.
Hello.
Sorry. Okay. You hear me?
I can.
Okay, so I apologize. Just joined. Are you in the public comment period?
I, we are.
Okay, I do have something to say. Nan Shostak and 25 La Geta Lane, been a longtime resident. I am a geologist. I understand the geology of the area. And I am, I've just recently found out that the Geological Safety Committee, which I'm very concerned about, hasn't been active for at least three years. Its last meeting was in 2017. And I understand that a couple of the members are in their 90s. One died, as you know, I think last year. So it's been inactive. I would, I think it's very important to reactivate it because when the town was founded, this was a very, very important committee that provided information about the geologic safety of building on, you know, different sites in town. And we have sort of lost sight of that. I think it's, it's going to be important, especially with a lot of new building in town, to take a very, very careful look at where we're building, whether it's safe in terms of the geology. So I would, as I said, I would like to see the committee become active again. I'm going to volunteer to be a member of the committee. I would like to join the committee, and I will be submitting my application soon. And I just hope it, it does, as I say, become active and will be, I guess it reports to the planning commissions, so rather than directly to the town council. So I would like to see it filled out and actively providing information about the geologic safety of sites in town.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You will note that. Thanks. All right, then I'm going to move on to consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull something from the consent agenda? Okay, I don't see any council hands. I see two public hands. Kristi Corley.
I'm gonna let the other person go first. Thank you.
Betsy Morgan Thaler.
Thank you, Mayor Derwin, and hello, Happy New Year, council and staff. It regards consent item five.
All right. Kristi. Kristi, do you, do you wish to speak?
Kristi, I think you need to unmute at your end.
Hello, sorry about that. I'm just wondering on the EIR finances for the wedge, if that can be pulled so we can discuss it.
Okay, which number are you talking about?
Amendment, it's number one. Patchment one.
No, it's item.
It's number red page 61 through 65.
Mayor Derwin, it's item six.
Okay. All right, and one more hand up. Rusty Day.
Hold on just a sec, Rusty. There you go. Rusty, I think you need to unmute it. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. There you go.
I too wanted to request that item six be taken off the consent agenda. Indeed, I'm curious why it's on the town council agenda, not the planning commission agendas. It's the planning commission that is supervising the EIR.
Okay, thanks. I don't see any more public hands. I'm going to go back to the council. Does anyone want to pull anything? Let me remind everyone that the public is absolutely welcome to ask to pull any item, but the council are the only ones who can actually pull it. So would anyone like to pull item five or item six on the council? Okay, I'm happy to pull item six. So let's talk about item six.
Do you want me to go back to the questions from Kristi and Rusty?
Yes, please.
Kristi, I'm gonna allow you to talk here. Hold on. There you go. And you need to unmute at your end.
I'm gonna let Rusty speak on this one.
Are you gonna speak at all, Kristi? Just so I know if I can need to call on you?
It all depends on where it goes. Sorry.
And, Madam Mayor, Cara Silver, town attorney, if I could just clarify for the public, you are permitted to speak to any item on the consent calendar. When the mayor asks for public comment on the calendar, you do not need to have an item pulled in order to speak on it. So I think that the council is now giving you the second opportunity to, to speak to the particular item that has been pulled. But in the future, you can speak regardless of whether the item has been pulled.
I'm sorry, would that apply to Betsy? Also, I think wanted to pull, comment on one of the items that was not.
Yes, yes, we will go back to Betsy, but we will stay with Rusty.
Okay. Well, there you go, Rusty.
Thank you for the clarification, but I guess I'm more confused now than ever because in the minutes of, that are in this agenda, there's a statement about the policy for consent agenda items, and it's unclear whether the public can address those items and when the public can address those items unless they are pulled from the consent agenda. So could would you clarify what you mean, when the public can address these items, and how?
Yes, when the mayor calls for public comment on the consent calendar, any member of the public can comment on any item on the consent calendar. And based on those comments, that the council can then decide whether to pull an item or not. And once the item is pulled, the council will have further discussion on that item and proceed to a vote.
Thank you. That, that's very helpful. I was unclear, and I don't believe prior practice included a period of public comment on consent agenda items. But if that's going to occur, and we can now have public comment on it, that's great. So the, my comment, I believe there are others who also wish to give public comment on item six is the one we're addressing. Item six is a proposal to amend the contract for the consultant who is working on the EIR for the Stanford project. And it's proposing, the, the item is to add some additional money for some items that I know some people want to speak to. My comment has to do with process, which is, I find it odd that this is coming before the town council. I believe it's the jurisdiction of the planning commission to supervise the EIR. It was the planning commission that held the public hearing on the scope of the EIR. It seems to me it's the planning commission that should be first considering what, if any, changes are needed in the EIR and making a recommendation, if one is needed, to the town council to approve the funding for it. So that's my comment, and I would encourage, I understand the planning commission. My understanding is, the planning commission has not considered this. This wasn't taken to the planning commission. And I think it should go to the planning commission. I think they should hold a public hearing on it because there are many comments about the substance of this. Thank you.
Are there other people who wish to speak about this? Betsy, is your hand up for this as well?
I think Betsy's up for item five.
Okay, Kristi.
Hold on just a second. I'm managing talking here. Kristi, there you go. Kristi, you need to unmute.
There we go. Thank you. I'm wondering for the, it looks like there's $20,000 put in excess for possible other studies. Is this an appropriate amount? And how can this amount be adjusted in the future?
Okay, who would like to take that?
I can start, and Laura can follow up. We believe this is an appropriate amount based on the remaining work. And if additional monies are necessary, we'll bring back an amendment to the contract as we're doing tonight. Laura, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Hold on, Mary. And if I'm sorry, Mary, before you start, if people who have completed their comments could lower their hands, that would be much appreciated. Thank you. Go ahead, Mary.
I'm just following up on these comments. It's been very tough to get the attention of, of the EIR in my experience, including, we've had people try and, and bring things to the attention of the council and the staff who have not been able to get through. And I don't think it's the fault of anybody. I think it's actually COVID obscurity on the, on the part of trying to get information into the EIR process. And I believe we really need to respect the fact that we too, as citizens, are working with a handicap and that our organizations who defend our wildlife and defend our water sheds and defend our, our archaeological resources are also experiencing a considerable amount of slowdown in their ability to reach out and to communicate. We really need to clean up our receptiveness to that, I, I would hope, in order to be able to get the best we can for the town and for this piece of land. In particular, I think this number grossly underestimates the need we have for in-depth archaeological studies and in-depth ecological studies and environmental studies. There are also other areas that are of great importance to all of us, but one example would be that there's no subservice investigation been done at all archaeologically. And a, a project of this nature should have visualization of the subsurface archaeological sites that are present. That's only one of, a variety of problems that are, are going to be costly, costly to Stanford and that are a real part of making this, this project a success for our town and for the things that we hold dear as a community. So I think this is a gross, a gross underestimation of the costs. And, and you can tell from the amount of money that Stanford offered the communities in Santa Clara County, et cetera, that we're way underestimating what, what the, the dollars and cents that are at stake here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your attention.
Carolyn Vertonghen.
Hold on, Carolyn. There you go. You need to unmute at your end.
Well, it has changed again, but thank you. And thank you for allowing us to speak. I have two comments on the Stanford wedge. I had attended a traffic meeting last week, and it wasn't clear if the traffic study was already done. And if this is included in the 2019 traffic study that was done, or there was a different study done, and who did the study?
Really, are you talking about item number six? Is that what this pertains to?
Well, it's something about the financing. So it's the Stanford wedge, so.
I'm just not, I'm not sure if this is germane to item number six. Is it, Laura? Her comment?
Um, it could be. This contract does include the traffic analysis.
That's all I wanted. Okay, Carolyn, go ahead.
So we don't know, was the traffic analysis done? Was it Lampier who did it? And also, I wanted to know, when we do, when we file an application for remodel or something, we pay upfront. Is that the same with Stanford?
Jeremy?
I'd like to defer to Laura on this.
Okay.
Um, yes, they do pay a significant amount of the money upfront. We collected the majority of the money for the EIR before it started, and then we collect additional funds as necessary as we do with other applications. Thank you. Is there another portion of the question that you'd like me to answer, Madam Mayor?
Nope. All right, then, Caroline, while you're still here, which minutes did you take issue with? Because I wanted to pull that, the minutes. Was it December 9?
I'm sorry, Caroline, you'll have to unmute again. I, I disconnected you. My apologies. There you go.
Well, it's not discussing because it's already approved. It just, I
No, no, we haven't approved it yet. I can still pull it. Was it December 9?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm also gonna pull item number one. Okay, let's see. All right, I think we're done on that. Betsy, would you like to speak to number five? And if I'm understanding the process, Betsy will make comments, and then we decide whether we want to pull it. Is that correct, Cara?
You, you could certainly handle it that way. Typically, what we have done in the past is we call the consent calendar as a whole. Members of the public comment on any item they want, and they make full comments at that time. And then the matter returns to council, and council can determine which matter to, to pull and discuss.
Okay. Betsy, item number five.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Derwin, I, my comments concern the draft letter response to the grand jury, particularly on red page 48, item R2. The second bullet point of the grand jury recommendation asks cities to address a perceived contractor shortage. Whether or not that is true, the means of addressing it, they specifically call out as including the feasibility of allowing contractors to engage non-licensed handymen in lieu of subcontractors. I, that, that caused me concern because second homes aren't so different from first homes. And if we're gonna allow handymen to be subs, why are we singling out some of the housing and not all of the housing? Because the risk factors, I would think, would be the same. And the draft response to that was such that it, it, it allows that you're exploring second unit construction aspects. But since I think that the safety reasons, the integrity reasons for construction are the same, I would just urge you to, to consider a more cautionary response that, just as you included the letter from Hillsborough, that our letter might be a signal to other cities to, to be, to be cautious here. I think it's warranted. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So, so Cara, I'm, I am kind of confused. So at this point, do I ask the council if they would like to pull item number five and talk about making changes?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, would you like, would anyone like to pull item number five and make any changes? Okay, I see no hands. I'm gonna pull item number one. And I would like to include Carolyn Vertonghen as one of the attendees. She called in, but when you call in, the clerk cannot see who you are, therefore, they cannot, she cannot list you as an attendee. So this time, we will put Carolyn in. But in the future, if you call in and you would like to be listed as an attendee, please send the clerk an email the next day with your phone number and name. Okay. Really done a strange job of this tonight. I apologize. Can I get a motion to approve consent items one through seven?
Mayor Derwin, looks like there might be at least one more raised hand. Now there's two, Rita and Kristi. Do we want to take their comments before a vote?
Well, I haven't heard from Rita, so I will definitely take Rita's comment. Rita.
Hi, I just want to do a point of clarification because when I signed on, I had to put my name and my email. So I guess now you have a full list of the attendees and all of their emails. And I just wanted to comment on item number seven. And item number seven is about the ordinance. I had sent a message to Jeremy earlier today. I had two questions, and he answered one. And the second one was about the exceptions for the red flag ordinance and what the exceptions would be, emergency. And I just felt like, you know, sometimes people misuse that word. What's an emergency? That then they can still use gas-powered lawn equipment, you know, any kind of lawn equipment. What's an emergency? And Jeremy answered me back saying it would be like a life-threatening emergency, but it doesn't state that in the writing of the ordinance. And, you know, if there's a chance for people to have exceptions, you know, people will ask for exceptions, written exceptions. And I would say, in a life-threatening emergency, nobody would be writing for a permit for an exception. So if it could be clarified that it's a life-threatening, as Jeremy stated to me in the email response back, not just emergency, if that could be cleared up a little bit so that people aren't just asking for exceptions because they haven't purchased an electric item or their, you know, perhaps their people that do their lawns and trees don't have electric. You know, if that could be clarified. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak about item number seven? Okay, then I'm gonna go back to the council. Does anybody on the council want to pull item number seven and make that clarification? I see no hands. All right, I'm gonna go back to the attendees, and I'm hoping this is the last question because we have a very long agenda tonight. Kristi Corley, do you have something new to ask?
Thank you. I was curious as to the new ADU number, which is accessory dwelling unit number for the town of Portola Valley for this eight-year housing element called RENA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation. We're for 2015 through 2023.
Are you speaking to number five?
It has to do with number five, yeah. I was trying to talk to, raise my hand, but you didn't call on me during number five.
I'm sorry.
So I just was curious what number we're on. In the report, it says 63. And I'm curious what our 2010, 20 December report is.
Laura, do you recall the most recent number?
I believe the most recent number is 69.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Sharon.
Jeremy muted. You're muted.
All right. Councilmember Alfs.
Aye.
Councilmember Wernikoff.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Aye.
Mayor Derwin.
Aye. Thank you. Going to move on to item number, the first item, eight on our regular agenda. This is a public hearing for the appeal of 138 Goya. I have to give a little bit of preliminary before we, we get into this one. First of all, Councilmember Sarah Wernikoff has recused herself, so she will not be with us during this portion of the evening. Timing. All the presentations, public comments and closing remarks can be time limited at the discretion of the mayor, consistent with our policy. So my question to the council, let me see how many attendees there are. Sixty. Does anyone on the council wish to limit public comment on this item to two minutes?
Madam Mayor, may I just, before we go into the discussion items, I believe Councilmember Wernikoff, since she's recused, may want to state her reason for recusal before we excuse her.
All right, Tara?
Yep, sure, I'm happy to do that. The tenant at 148 Goya is a close personal friend of mine, and I just thought in abundance of caution, it would be appropriate for me to recuse myself.
All righty.
So she will be turning off her camera.
Okay, bye, guys.
Bye. Okay, so does, would anyone like to limit public comment on this item to two minutes? Or are you okay with three minutes? You're okay with three minutes? Wow, you guys are not noisy tonight. Okay, so as for the presentations from the applicant and the appellate, staff has recommended that each limit their presentations to 15 minutes and their closing remarks, or, if you will, rebuttals to three minutes. They have been advised of these time limits, and this was also the practice at the planning commission hearing in October. Let's see what else. Okay, this is the way this is gonna go. Staff will give their presentation. Then council will ask questions of staff. Then the applicant will give her presentation, and then the council will ask questions of the applicant. Then the appellant will give his presentation, and then council will ask questions of the appellant. Then I will open the public hearing, and anyone in the public may make comments or ask questions. And then I will close the public hearing. And then the applicant will have the three-minute rebuttal, closing remarks, and the appellant will have the rebuttal, closing remarks. And then it comes back to our discussion and our decision. So with that, I will turn this over to, is it Laura?
Yes, thank you. Jeremy, if you would make Stephen King a panelist, please, so he can join us here. And Dylan is going to share his screen, and then we'll get started.
My
My share, screen sharing capabilities have been disabled by the host.
I'm looking to see if there's a way to do that. Just give me fifteen seconds here and if it doesn't work, why don't you just email it to me and I can, I can run the presentation.
So I'll go ahead and do an introduction. Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Laura, Planning and Building Director. I'm here with Dylan Parker, who's the project planner for this application. So tonight's staff will be providing an overview of the relevant information related to the appeal for this project at one thirty eight Goya. So our intent is to give you the overview to help the council and the community to understand the background and the key points on this project. Much more detailed information is included in the staff report as well as the administrative record, which is on the town's website and linked to the staff report. The administrative record includes all of the relevant background information from the reviews that were already conducted by the ASCC and the Planning Commission. So the mayor has already gone over the order that we propose to manage things this evening. So once we've got the PowerPoint up and running, we can give you the overview of the project.
Dylan, email it to me. Doesn't look like I I'm able to do it in in meeting.
Send an email.
Okay, just give us a minute here.
So here is just our introductory slide. As you know, this is an appeal of the planning commission decision to approve the architectural review and site development permits for a new residence. This is projects proposed at one thirty eight Goya Road. Next slide, please. And the mayor has already gone over this meeting structure, so we won't repeat on that. And we'll go ahead and go to the next slide and I'll turn the details of the presentation over to Dylan Parker.
Thank you, Director Russell. Staff would like to begin this presentation with an overview of the site. The subject property is a three point one acre, is three point one acres with an average slope of thirty five percent and is within the town's RE zoning district. Currently, a four thousand eighty seven square foot two story residence with attached garage built in nineteen sixty six exists on site. Next slide, please. The proposal is to demolish the existing two story residence and construct a new two story residence with basement, pool, and associated hardscape and landscape improvements. The new residence main level is pivoted approximately forty five degrees to the south from the existing footprint, but is still within the building site. The second story is set at an angle that roughly follows the footprint of the existing residence's single story. A three car garage with a guest suite attaches to the main living quarters of the residence through a fully enclosed hallway, which additionally serves to frame the westerly edge of the new pool and integrated spa of the residence. The table on the left indicates the project's conformance with the applicable town development standards such as height, setback, and maximum floor area. Staff would like to note an error within the report, red page one twelve for reference, proposes, propose, notes that the proposed vertical height is incorrectly noted. With an overview of the project now discussed, I'd like to discuss the review timeline of the project. Next slide, please. On July the thirteenth, twenty twenty, ASCC conducted a preliminary review of the project at which the view corridor issue was discussed by representatives from both one thirty eight and one forty eight Goya Road. In consideration of staff's report, public, public comments and discussion amongst themselves, ASCC suggested the following project changes to alleviate the view corridor issue. Reduce overall height of structure by one foot. Reduce interior plate heights by one foot. Relocate residents southerly by one by five feet. Modify the roof line and rotate the second story massing. Next slide, please. On July the twenty first, twenty twenty, staff received revised plans based on ASCC's suggested changes and continued conversations with one forty eight Goya Road neighbors regarding view corridor concerns. Project revisions included a one foot reduction of vertical height, a one foot reduction of maximum height, roughly one foot reduction in the first floor plate height. Next slide, please. So this slide just details the reduced vertical and maximum heights. Next slide, please. On August the twenty fourth, twenty twenty, the ASCC conducted the final review, their final review of the project. In consideration of staff's report, public comments, and discussion amongst themselves, ASCC voted four to one to approve the project with Chair Breen voting against. During the meeting, ASCC noted the following. Some unreasonable obstruction of views from one forty eight Goya occurred with the project, but the views were not reasonably, unreasonably impacted. The proposed residence had a similar massing in form as the existing residence, wherein the first story is larger than the second story. Were many opportunities for expansive views, there were many opportunities for expansive views from one forty eight Goya Road that the project resulted in a minimum loss of view and that the design guidelines are not interpreted to review views, to review views and stat, result, to result in static view corridors, excuse me, views could be modified by future development. And lastly, that the town was mostly concerned with public view corridors along Portola and Alpine Roads. Next slide, please. On October the twenty first, twenty twenty, the planning commission visited both one forty eight and one thirty eight Goya, Goya Road sites and then considered the appeal of the ASCC's August the twenty fourth decision to approve the project. Discussion topics during the hearing included project compliance with the general plan, zoning code, design guidelines, and CEQA. The majority of the discussion centered around the appellant's view impact concerns. In discussion of the appeal, a commissioner opined that it is reasonable to expect view corridor modifications through redevelopment. The commission voted four to zero to deny the appeal and uphold ASCC's approval of the project. Commissioner Taylor was absent from the hearing. So now with the review history discussed, staff would turn to how the project conforms. Staff would like to now turn to how the project conforms to town's policies. Next slide, please. So the general plans land use element describes development principles and objectives to achieve in residential areas, which I've listed on this slide. Staff finds that the project meets both the principles and objectives as it integrates the building into its surroundings and maintains a similar massing pattern to the existing house, minimizes grading and site disturbance, preserves natural terrain and landscaping, groups the house and associated improvements into the existing built site, built area, maintains the natural beauty, habitat, and open space of the majority of the site, and maintains the character of the residential area by building below the maximum development standards and reusing the building, the existing building area. Next slide, please. Town code outlines objective standards for project review and subjective criteria that are officially called findings for approval of an architectural and site plan review application. As detailed in the complete analysis within staff's report to the council, planning commission found that the project in conformance with these objective development standards such as height, setback, maximum floor area, and impervious surfaces. Planning commission also found the project conforms to subjective standards such as reuse of the existing building site to minimize natural terrain disturbance and adequate provision of light and air for itself and neighbors. Next slide, please. The town's design guidelines include review, include review criteria for three main aspects of a project. Site design, architectural design, and landscape design. Under these main aspects, the guidelines provide additional principles for certain aspects of the project. These principles are discretionary and subject to interpretation by the reviewing body. A key component of this appeal is view preservation. Therefore, staff will provide additional information on this principle. Next slide, please. Bullet four on page six of the design guidelines states, quote, "Prevent the obstruction of views of adjacent property owners by structures or additions to existing structures," end quote. So using the diagram to the left and the information gathered during visits to both sites today, the council should consider if the project complies with the majority of the view principles within the design guidelines. The planning commission and staff found that there are some view reductions to the one forty eight Goya Road property, but the project generally complies with the design guidelines, particularly the view principles. The proposed design is similar in character and massing to the existing house while maximizing the existing building site due to one thirty eight Goya's topographic constraints, thirty five percent average slope, which limits development. With project completion, one forty eight Goya will still have expansive views. The owners of one forty eight Goya have expressed interest in redeveloping the property in the near future, which could potentially recapture some views. Next slide, please. So in accordance, in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, commonly referred to as CEQA, the project is considered exempt from environmental review because it meets the requirements of what is commonly called a categorical exemption. The project is construct, is, the project proposes construction of a single family residence within a residentially zoned district. Furthermore, the project is not an exception to a categorical exemption since it does not meet any of the defined categories for an exception such as located on a scenic highway or hazardous waste site. So CEQA generally applies to public views, not necessarily private views. Therefore, the planning commission found that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA and requires no additional environmental review. And so with the project's conformance to town policies discussed, staff would like to now turn to public comments. Next slide, please. So staff provided public comment or public notice of tonight's hearing in accordance with town code. Public comments received prior to publication of the staff report were provided as attachment seven, attachment seven of staff's report to the council. The majority of letters received were continued support of the project from neighbors. A few, a few letters received expressed concerns related to view impacts. A few public comments received after publication of staff's report have been forward to the council for consideration. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, the planning commission and staff found that the project conforms to the general plan, zoning code, design guidelines, and is exempt from further environmental review per CEQA. Therefore, staffer recommends that the town council deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's decision subject to the recommended conditions of approval as detailed in the draft resolution. Town council may, may wish to consider the alternative actions described on red pages one eighteen and one nineteen on this appeal. Next slide, please. So with that, this concludes staff's presentations and we are available for any questions from council. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Dylan. Council members, do you have questions? And if you do, can you raise your little hand in the red panelist? It's actually easier for me to see. No questions. Oh, Craig.
Yes, my question, I think it's probably for Cara, but perhaps for planning staff. It's really as regards the the role of the design guidelines. As I understand them, the design guidelines, the reference to our municipal code, but they really are guidelines and not code requirements. They're, they're elements that should be considered by the ASCC in their review, but they're not as the other, you know, the numeric code requirements. They're not hard and fast rules. They're really, I think Dylan mentioned something about, you know, as long as the majority of them are complied with. But could you just clarify how much compliance is actually required with the guidelines? And is that really just up to the ASCC to decide whether or not the design guidelines are satisfied?
Sure, thank you for that question. This is a question that that frequently comes up in design review. It's common to have several different layers of design criteria for a project. There are certainly the general plan principles and the zoning code requirements. Also zoning code requirements have some subjective elements that address design issues. And when the zoning code has those types of criteria, it's standard to have the requirement to make particular findings as specified in the zoning code. And Portola Valley has a set of discretionary design criteria that do require that the decision making body to make particular findings that those particular criteria can be met. And then the other level of design criteria that that city codes and and guidelines typically have is what we call design guidelines. And those are applied generally when a city or town has an architectural review board. In Portola Valley, of course, we have the ASCC that operates as a design review board. And they are, design guidelines are typically a set of discretionary criteria that are applied on a case by case basis. And they help inform the design review committee and the decision maker about how to judge the project. And it's not expected that every single one of the criteria can be met. Sometimes, as you will notice, when when you review our local design criteria, there are some inconsistent guidelines with one another. And so they just are a reference tool that can be applied on a case by case basis. And not every one of the guidelines needs to be met for each project. And the decision making body has the discretion to apply them as they see fit.
Thank you.
Okay, John, and I believe, John, you were in a body who created the design.
But I wanted to just weigh in on.
That I wanted to just weigh in on as one of the people on the original ASCC group that developed the first design guidelines. Cara is exactly right. These were done as guidelines. They were intended to be fairly flexible. Guidelines only because we were we were looking, trying to trying to develop the balance between hard and fast numbers, which always make it a little bit easier when you can point to a number and say, this is what you can do. And the the need to to try to come at it from a more subjective viewpoint in order to keep the the rural atmosphere of a town. So that was the original intent. And I know Carter was on the SEC a few years later, and they did some modifications to the design guidelines. Don't remember exactly what was changed, but it was basically the same as what we started with. If you try to clarify things a little bit more, but it was intended really as a very flexible guideline.
Thanks, John. Jeff.
Jeff, you're muted.
Yeah, yeah. In recent years, how many residential, single-family projects have been found not exempt from CEQA? And for what reasons? I can imagine historical, some historical buildings might have been not exempt. But if have we, when's the last time that we had a residential project that was not CEQA exempt?
I am not familiar with any single-family projects that were not CEQA exempt.
Yeah, I'm not either. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's see. Any more hands? Okay, I don't see any more hands up, so we will move on to our presentation by the applicant.
Aruna will start and I'll follow after her.
Yeah. Thanks, everybody, for dialing in. I'm Aruna Gambier. I'm the homeowner and the applicant for 138 Goya. I've lived in Portola Valley for seventeen years. I've been quite involved with the schools and the community in general. My husband and I started this project together a year and a half ago. We picked Dan Spiegel as our architect pretty soon after purchasing the property. Because even though we had worked with Dan previously on our Golden Hills home, and we've been very happy with how smart and how creative Dan has been and continues to be. And, you know, our first pre-application meeting with the town was actually in November twenty nineteen. And the plans were formally submitted about a year ago. At the outset of the project, you know, I personally reached out to the neighbors for feedback and support, including the tenant, Dr. Lucy Kim, who was at 148 Goya. And she emailed me back on January fifth that, you know, she would forward the plans to the Kings. She was not comfortable giving me their direct contact information, which I completely understood. But every other adjacent neighbor and neighbors on Goya provided me with the written support for the project prior to submission of this package. Dan will discuss, you know, the whole process in more detail, but I'll just have to say this whole, you know, my friends who built homes in Portola Valley, I have a lot of friends who have gone through this process. They said, oh, it's going to be a little bit of a pain, but you'll get through it. But frankly, this has been extremely long, time-consuming, expensive, draining, and quite painful. I never expected to go through this. And I think the whole point of appeal after appeal is to really wear me down. But I'm not going to. I'm going to build this house. I have a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that no one has appealed to the planning commission the last fifteen years, let alone appealing to the town council. I think in that time period, probably hundreds of homes have been built in Portola Valley, different sizes, shapes, and, you know, all that you've seen has been the within the town. And I just don't understand it. But can say that, you know, we know, we're always aware that Portola Valley has clear zoning rules. And we took that into consideration when we bought this property, and not every property is the same, and every property has different views, and things are always dynamic, even our house in Golden Hills, things have been changing with the neighbors, building stuff, etc. So it's not a static position. And, you know, we proposed our house, keeping all of this in mind and keeping all the experiences of our friends in mind, we proposed a house that is well within those rules, clearly following the design guidelines within all the prescribed setbacks and well below the maximum height and square footage. And as we all know, there are many architects in town who'd like to build to the last allowable square footage, but we didn't go there. We didn't want to. But, you know, once we heard the objection from the Kings, Dan, this was, Dan met with them nearly a year ago to offer some mitigation strategies. But they insisted repeatedly that we entirely redesign the house to be single-story, or they would object and obstruct. Just as we followed the zoning rules, we understand that there's no single resident that gets to override those rules or unilaterally veto a project. It wouldn't be fair. So we've been thus far subjected to three public hearings already. This is our fourth. We there's broad community support, as you can see from the support letters. There's been three separate recommendations to approve from the staff of the planning department, a four-to-one vote from the ASCC, a four to zero to uphold approval from the planning commission. And we followed the town rules, respected the process, you know, through all this time demonstrated repeatedly over and over again. And, you know, enough is enough now. And now I ask the town council, please uphold our approval and allow me to finally move forward with my new home. Thank you so much.
Jeremy, can you allow me to share a screen, please? That's doable.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the technical issue is tonight. I went in the back end and all the features are on for participants, so I'm not sure why people aren't seeing the share screen feature at the bottom. So Dan, if you want me to show it.
It's just disabled. Is there a way to right-click on the screen share to allow and to enable it? I have quite a few slides.
Unfortunately, there there does not appear to be, I actually went into the guts of the meeting to restore that function. It was turned on. I did an additional toggle to turn it back on. I'm not sure why there is not a shared shared screen function for people, so I think the only way we're going to be able to do is an email to me.
I'll send you that email. Can I request a few extra minutes for the presentation?
Yeah. No problem.
Toggle through quite a few slides. Give me one moment, please.
And I'd like to extend that to the appellant as well. Carter and Stephen, if you have anything, just email me, please.
Just sent you the link, please. Tell me if you received it.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep, I have it. Just give me a moment while I open it up.
The beginning is a bit of an introduction, so I can just start with that while we wait for the slides to come up. Hi, I'm Dan Spiegel. I'm the principal of Saw, which is a hybrid design firm in San Francisco, where the architects and landscape architects for the Gambier residents. I'd like to take a moment now to thank the town council for your attention to our project and the planning department staff who have worked tirelessly despite the challenges of the pandemic. I'd also like to express appreciation for the ASCC and planning commission, who thoughtfully and carefully reviewed our project and now have approved it twice. I recognize that they're a volunteer with their time, and these processes can be quite difficult. So I've had the distinct pleasure of knowing and working with the Gambiers on various projects over the last nine, now ten years. I also wanted to note that I grew up in nearby Mellow Park. I took piano lessons in Ladera, learned swim at Alpine Hills, played Little League at Ford Field Soccer outside of Zots, went to college just down the road at Stanford. I'm now a member of the UC Berkeley Architecture Faculty, a little further down the road and across a bridge, which is all to say that while I live and work in San Francisco, this area has been a huge part of my life. And specifically, the unique connection between the landscape and community has had an important impact on our practice and how we approach our work, especially projects such as this.
Can everyone see it?
Yep. Next page, please.
138 Goya is a beautiful yet complex property. There's an existing house perched towards the edge of a hill and then a steep slope, making most of the land effectively unbuildable. Next. The existing two-story house is idiosyncratic and adventurous, but outmoded and in disrepair. We admire the material palette and integration of interior and exterior. We even plan to reuse as much of the redwood siding as possible. Next, please. Portola Valley also has a rich history of architectural and vernacular forms using simple shapes and vertical moves to engage the landscape. Worcester's Gregory Farmhouse in the bottom right is in Scotts Valley, but is emblematic of the careful and clear geometric moves in the landscape. Next. These forms have become more adventurous over the years, but the desire to draw from context from nature still guides. Next. We set out to design a house that would emphasize the horizon using natural materials such as cedar and redwood and natural textures such as board-form concrete to integrate the design with nature. We carefully studied the siding, massing, and materials through drawings, models, and 3D simulations. And in the end, we've developed a design approved approved enthusiastically by the ASCC and planning commission. It is well below the allowable floor areas and maximum height provided in the zoning ordinance. Next. The largest element of the house is one-story oriented along the slope of the hill, with a second story which twists to align roughly with the existing residence and respond to the path of the sun. The second floor represents only twenty-four percent of the total square footage of the proposed residence. The rotated volumes also ensure that there are no continuous two-story walls anywhere in the residence. Next. Next. There's a popular walking path with an easement towards the bottom of the property, and the Gambiers have gone to great lengths to improve the condition of this area. Next. The proposed location of the house coincides with the existing residences. It pulls back from the edge to defer to views from below. The massing was also studied carefully with respect to the views of all existing adjacent structures. Next. A harmonious blending of new and existing trees further integrates new and old building landscape. Next. Here's the proposed view from the street. The existing driveway will be reused. Next. The small, low guest house greets you first, also providing the opportunity for the fire truck turnaround. Next. Further along the approach to the house, native trees frame the path. The overhangs provide shade. Next. For environmental performance, a grove of trees and a statue of the Gambier's son, Millen. Next. As the materials age, the wood slats will silver, blending in further with the oak trees. Next. Here's the east elevation showing the emphasis on the horizon as the second story notches down into the first. We pulled the possible roof deck from consideration in order to reduce the impact on sightlines. Next. Rotation also ensures that undifferentiated walls never exceed one floor. Next. And provides shading for the living spaces.
It doesn't seem to be loading, Dan. Hold on.
It's the Jeremiah Johnson chin whiskers.
I don't see anything after slide eighteen here. Let me close out of it and see if I can't get it to start up again. Give me a moment.
Sounds good. If it's easier, I can send it to you as a PDF instead.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, just in case I can't get this up?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, I got it working down. Hold on. What was it? Slide nineteen we were on? Is that correct?
Let me see. We were on, yes, slide nineteen.
Stop the screen sharing, Jeremy.
Oh, did I?
There you go. Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. So as I was saying, the rotation also ensures that undifferentiated walls never exceed one floor and provides shading for the living spaces, allowing for passive cooling and environmental performance. Next. The guest house maintains these relationships as well. Next. From the valley floor, the project is imperceptible, largely due to the shift backward. Next. Many rooms are defined by introspective, contemplative, memorial spaces, critical driver of this project. Next. The material palette is selected to blend with the site and repurpose as much as possible from the existing structure. Next. Landscape softens the edges and blends the transitions, organizing around a series of inward-facing courtyards. Next. And providing additional screening for privacy. Next. The Gambiers have done extensive neighborhood outreach from early in the project, receiving written support from five out of the six adjacent neighbors, as well as many others in the community who have supported the project in the last two public hearings. Next. Last three. Many more will be read into the record today. Next. And reliably throughout this process, a great number of neighbors have shown up. Next. Again and again at each public hearing. Next. To express their support for the project. Next. Unfortunately, as you know, there is one neighbor who does not support this project, but that doesn't mean that we haven't considered their perspective or their property. We carefully considered view corridors, including theirs, and the design of the project, studying in particular the potential impacts of the project and their primary living spaces. This is also important to note that these two sites are different. For instance, the floor level at 148 Goya is a full twenty feet higher than the existing and proposed floor level to Gambier's property. This here is an unedited panorama from just in front of the primary living space of 148 Goya. The story pulls up prior to the removal of the trees in the tent. Next. We, of course, take the town design guidelines very seriously. As Dylan referred to, this is the view preservation diagram from page six in the guidance. Next. And as you can see, our proposal incorporates the prescribed relationships between buildings extremely closely. Next. Especially when considering the orientation of the existing house. Next. And the presence of a large protective oak tree on the 148 property. Next. The Kang story has changed quite a bit over time, and it's been a struggle to adapt to a rotating cast of characters and moving targets. Mr. Kang's presentation last meeting was about his future and final. But to be clear, contrary to what would be implied by the orientation of the existing house, the property owners at 148 depicted the center line of the view corridor as somehow being skewed to the house orientation. As you can see, the center line of the so-called primary view feature somehow misses the fact that there's a large protective oak tree directly in the middle of this view. Next. The two properties are adjacent, so we are not implying that there is no visual impact on one another, but that when not zoomed in, distorted, and taken from
but that when not zoomed in, distorted, and taken from charting the manage points, the impact on the view is minimal, and that a vast view remains intact. Next. Here it is from another vantage point towards the center of the property. Next. At the last hearing, the appellant's made an argument that the view from their pool would be most severely impacted. Despite the fact that this would likely not be considered a primary view, if you look closer, you will likely notice that the entire pool area is surrounded by a code-required five-foot-tall safety fence, surely a much larger impediment to their view. Next. Here is a color-coded selection of the appellant's mission. Even with this zoomed-in image taken from the pool area while below the building pad, you can see that the proposed structure doesn't even rise above the trees, producing a minimal impact on the panoramic view. Next. You'll likely hear about the attempts of the so-called compromise by the Kings, which occurred in August, just days before the second ASCC hearing. But what they failed to mention in the past was the months of intransigence that preceded that. I met with the Kings and Mr. Stotler on February 6th of property, at which point they demanded that we completely redesign the house and that they would only consider single-story proposing. They repeated this demand in writing several times and held to this unreasonable demand for 159 days. They have also in the past said that this delay was due to the pandemic. And no doubt, the pandemic has placed an immense burden on all of us. But the town rose to the call and was closed for only one month, working hard to keep the business and planning department moving. And with a team of hired consultants and a flurry of appeals, the Kings have shown that they can move quite quickly when they want to. Next. What is clear is that they did not want to, as evidenced by the repeated ultimatum. We redesigned the house to a single-story, or else. Here are just two instances of this demand, which can be found in the record. Next. After the first ASCC meeting on July 13th, these favorable results for our project reached out to the Kings and their team to see if they wanted to discuss any of the potential mitigation strategies that were raised in the hearing. We said that we would be willing to adopt them all. Next. However, they didn't respond for over two weeks in any way. So with the blessing of the planning staff, we re-submitted the project with some voluntary modifications, including height reduction for approval at the August 24th hearing. Only then did the Kings imply that they would be willing to talk. Even in the 11th hour, we took all the requested meetings, spent nearly 100 hours reviewing and responding to the hasty and often conflicting suggestions, producing models, diagrams, and drawings. We would have been thrilled if there was a clear solution here, but unfortunately, there was not. Next. We found it to be an impossible standard to meet, as their stated objective changed constantly, united only by the goal of derailing the project. Initially, the critical view to protect is the Hoover Tower, as shown in this email here. Eventually, that morphed to the Dunbarton Bridge. They have wobbled back and forth about whether they are concerned with the impact on the pool, the house, or some abstract notion of a future house that appears occasionally in the documentation. Of course, all of these shipping points make it very hard to produce a satisfactory result. Next. And while Mr. Paul's position letter submitted for this appeal, or actually the previous appeal, says that we were unwilling to cooperate, this August email from Peter Kang, which you can find in the record, both acknowledges our extensive efforts and declines to accept any of the proposed mediation strategies. Next. We have submitted a written response to Mr. Paul's appeal position statement from the Planning Commission, specifically on what we see as in the statements of the facts of the case. I've left this out of our presentation, but would be happy to discuss these issues further. I would, however, like to offer a more general response here. There is no question that the project implies with the specific requirements of the zoning ordinance by a significant margin. The finding has been made by three different bodies, the Planning Department, the ASCC, and the Planning Commission, that the project meets the town's design guidelines. There is no claim made of errors in the record, of omissions of important facts, or that the ASCC or Planning Commission lack the necessary information to review the project thoroughly, or were unable to do so for any other reason. What the appellant is asking you to do here is simply look at the same information and come to a different conclusion. The claim that this project is not seque exempt has been refuted by multiple times during this process. And even if an EIO were somehow required, what would be the supposed environmental impact? Using this argument as a cornerstone of the appeal exposes the cynical nature of the entire exercise. It is an attempt to stall, intimidate, and pressure Mrs. Gambier by protracting a costly and painful process on weak claims. The appeal, however, makes no mention of findings made by the commissioners in the two hearings. The ASCC unanimously supported the aesthetics and concept of the design, and they overwhelmingly supported the project as a whole. And then, in a de novo review, the Planning Commission unanimously upheld the approval of the project. And although we did not find a cooperative partner in the owners of 148 Goya, we made a series of concessions in the project between the first ASCC meeting and the approval meeting on August 24th, including reducing the overall height by a foot. In the end, through a sensitive massing, context-driven form, robust community process and integration with the landscape, Mrs. Gambier's new home provide her with an even deeper connection to this place and community. This was the finding of the Planning Department, who have reviewed the project multiple times, and each time made a recommendation to approve. This was the overwhelming finding of the community, who have made their voices heard in public hearings and beyond. And this was the finding of the ASCC, who reviewed the project twice in public hearings and voted 4-1 to approve the proposal. And this critically was the finding of the Planning Commission, who voted 4-0 to uphold the project. We are saddened by this protracted and contentious process, but we understand and respect rules. But the town guidelines have been met and must be enforced. We ask that you reaffirm once again the approval of our project and allow Mrs. Gambier finally to move on with the construction of her home. Thank you. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions? I'm not seeing any hands. No questions? All right, then I guess we will move on to our presentation by the appellant.
Just give me a second and I will load that up.
My name is Stephen Khan, the owner of 148 Goya. First, I'd like to thank council members concerning my concerns. When I purchased this house, I did it solely because of the view. You can see everything from here. There is nothing like it. I was amazed that I could see Stanford University campus, where my son went to school. I also associate with the university as a board member for past 20 years. I could also see downtown Palo Alto and the Bay area. You can always see all the way to the East Bay. All the landmarks I was associated with since I moved out here, Northern California, 1990. 148 Goya is a house where we are going to build a family, and I was going to pass it to my son, Peter. However, now the plans and hopes for our family are being crushed. When I saw the design and story posts, I thought that this probably will not be allowed. There are unusual rules that block the views in the neighborhood like this. Furthermore, when I had my first meeting with Dan Spiegel, with the West Ridge Architecture Committee, he was told that the design was too far along to make any changes. But he said he will see what he can do. He filed the original plan with no changes within one week. He never gave me any other compromises. It was clear that there was no compromise. He felt that he could, did not have do anything to accomplish or compromise issues. Mr. Spiegel and some council members say how we can complain about the house view when new design has not completed. They may ignore the fact that there is an existing house already. All but a nice house, a doctor's family is living there now, and she and her family and friends living in the Port Valley sent a few emails to you supporting my issues. New design will have the very similar footprint and the view corridor as an existing house. Ms. Spiegel managed to convince the ASCC that our view corridor should be shifted. Effectively, she's dictating our site planning all the while using the similar view corridor as more of theirs to maximize for their law. Why not? They shipped their view corridor instead. Our main issue is that proposed plan blocks several prominent sites from my property, namely Dunbarton Bridge, downtown Palo Alto, Mount Diablo, and the Stanford campus. Step made recommendations to alter the plan without beating the site based solely on Mr. Spiegel's presentation. Mr. Parker has not beat the site until last week. Again, Mr. Spiegel and Mr. Parker tried to claim that our only concern was Hoover Tower. But there was never been the case. Only an oblique reference myself being affiliated with Hoover was turned into the only thing you need to preserve here. Also, Mr. Parker and Mrs. Gambier blame me for delaying the project. I'm just exercising my own wife. Because the word put out of contact, committee members were being misguided. Our goal here is today is to preserve as much as our view possible as dictated by design guidelines. One of the issues stemming from the categorization of existing structure is two stories. Currently, there is less than 200 feet square foot of lot that reach the maximum height of 20 foot with a sloped loop. The applicant is being used to justify an expansion of a 2,800 square foot on the second floor with a very dramatic ceiling heights. I would characterize this existing house as one and a half-story house, which is how does not have a full second floor. And the worst of the second floor do not come up to the full height. The town should examine the definition to figure out what is an appropriate extension of the current site. The reason for the second floor is to fully take advantage of the valley views, which are visible from the first floor as well. While I understand that from a desirability standpoint of view, it is now taking the same views away from another party, which is why we are here processing and appealing. We acknowledge that Mr. Spiegel has suggested possibly making modifications by decreasing height by one to two feet, shifting the house by five to eight foot to the right. It is a step in the right direction, but not sufficient. However, in the final plan, he lowered height by only one foot and no shift to the right. He claims that he satisfied the West Ridge recommendations. As we have examined the plan, we found many design guideline violations, which we believe set a dangerous precedent for the town if those plans are approved. With it in mind, we have spent considerable time and effort to come up with alternate solutions to migrate the view impact. First, with Mr. Scott Stotler, who designed my houses in Los Altos Hills and also in Portola Valley. And later with our local architect, many of you know, Mr. Carter Ward. This is done at a great expense, along with approximately $30,000 left by the town for this process. Mrs. Gambier complained about the cost of maintaining the story posts. On August 7th last year, Mr. Stotler made the suggestions to lower and ship the existing design by regarding the site, upgrading the site, resulting in a larger building pad, while preserving all the design features in the original plan. This would increase the building pad to allow for 30 feet shift to the right and lower the house by several feet. The existing structure has raised pad that can be built from the, through the field. The natural pad of the lot is about two feet below as it is right now. On August 7th, Mr. Ward had a discussion with Dan Spiegel to switch the bedroom with the interior courtyard both on the left side of second floor. While not completely eliminating the view obstruction, it would largely mitigate issue and allow us to rapidly capture many of the sites that we cherish. Mr. Spiegel mentioned that we want not win to compromise, but we offered a very reasonable compromise, but he declined. Mr. Ward challenged Dan to make those changes. However, Mr. Spiegel came back and said this was not possible. Mr. Ward told him that this small modification would keep all the features of the new house and in the end end up being a better design overall. Formerly, we uncovered the extraordinary number of design guide violations, which somehow were missed by ASCC. While leading the staff report, I found the categorization and the defenses to be misguided and in some cases, flatly untrue. Given that ASCC made decisions based on the staff report, we appealed to the council to reevaluate this project with additional information to better understand the site and impact on this project. We put forth a large number of design violations. While I want not to go through all of them in the interest of time, however, here are some of the highlights. Page 21, blocking open spaces. The design clearly blocks open spaces as viewed from 148 Goya. Mr. Spiegel's presentation, the picture was very misleading. Also, from our full deck, the tall structure will not block any features there were previously built from here. Page 23, abstraction of the views. Our most primary concern is obstruction of views and prominent features. The guideline clearly states protect view corridor on the site to maintain views of prominent scenic features. It does not say that applicant can selectively choose what adjacent neighbors can and cannot see, all the while deserving those view corridors from depths through overbuilding the lot. The guideline also states prevent the obstruction of a view of adjacent property owners by structures or additions to existing structures. We are here to appealing because we are the adjacent lot. We are frustrated with the plans that add significant to the existing structure. I do not know how the current design is dependable without confusing the issues to all other unnecessary topics like a timeline to removal, minor discrepancies in measurement. None of that matters. The fact of the, is that the proposed structure is large number of insignificant landmarks from adjacent property, downtown Palo Alto, Stanford campus, Dunbarton Bridge, Mount Diablo, and the Bay. Furthermore, it is clear that applicant has many friends who will continue to chime in throughout this meeting and waste everybody's time as they neither live near the site nor affected by it. However, their feedback is not relevant to this appeal as they have not visited 148 Goya and they do not have a sense of the effect of the design. The fact remains that applicant has clearly violated town design guidelines when considering the fact that the view of the key landmark are blocked from the adjacent properties, which is expressly forbidden by design guidelines. Finally, I'd like to conclude with this point. If applicants propose to pass without modification, I must conclude council is confirming that features such as Dunbarton Bridge, downtown Palo Alto, Mount Diablo, and Stanford campus are no longer deemed to be prominent features worth protecting by design guidelines. Effectively, this is what an approval of the applicant's plans would mean in terms of present. We asked that if 148 Goya is not protected with regard to view of these prominent features or future developments and applications in Porta Valley should be subject to the same conditions. It would only be fair, it would be discriminatory to single out only this site if no protection is offered, but the future projects are. I would just like to say that the whole process has been a giant hurricane. After all, we and the Gambiers are slated to neighbors for a longer time. I find it quite funny that the applicant would choose to be so aggressive in their development and create such an obstruction to existing house while planning yet unbuilt house. I cannot imagine how the applicant through this would not be a problem. And also goes to say they really don't seem to care about who might live around them and how they are making them feel. We invite Mrs. Gambier to come out the house and see what it looked like from our perspective and what she's taking away. Is it what she would want to if our roles are reversed? I'd ask council to consider what kind of community you are creating here. We are. We are, what are you allowing and what type of development in manner and scope would you like to set for next several decades? We consider this 148 Goya to be a long-term project, multi-generation of property. What happens here today would have permissions to now lifetime. Lashing a decision to approve this project for convenience without mitigation would have a limitation for the decades. Is this a legacy? Do you want to leave behind? Thank you.
Carter, are you going to make a presentation based on the materials you sent me?
I'm going to jump in before Carter. This is Stephen Paul. No problem. I'm going to try and make this very brief. My name is Stephen Paul. We represent Mr. and Mrs. Khan. We're, we're awfully proud to represent in this most difficult process. As you said, he acquired 148 Goya to build a forever home. And while Mr. Khan and Carter Ware are going to talk about the design issues and impacts, my concern is on the SEQA issue and its applicability to the project. Staff has stated in your staff report at page 16 that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA and no exceptions apply. We respectfully disagree. I would, so I don't have to read it, incorporate our letters that are in your staff report of October 14th and October 21st of 2020, which go into great detail with citations relating to SEQA and its applicability. But as we explained in our correspondence of those two dates, the project as designed and as Mr. Khan said violates Portola Valley's municipal code, specifically 18064045, which incorporates the design guidelines. And we're specifically focused on both the town's design guidelines related to view preservation as well as the guidelines during the massing and bulk. The SEQA categorical exemption is not absolute. It is qualified. Council even advised you of that. It does not apply to projects which may impact on an environmental resource of a critical concern which has been officially adopted by a local agency. That's exactly what you've done in your design guidelines. You have said view corridors are a critical concern, so much so that they take up an entire page of your design guideline. And you've, and you've as a town adopted those guidelines. This is not to say, by the way, that if a SEQA analysis was completed on this project, that it would fail. That's not exactly, that's not what I'm saying at all. It's the process needs to be completed. It just can't be ignored. So this project may survive the analysis and may not, but the analysis was simply sidestepped. And as Carter Ware is going to tell you, this house is simply 16 feet of too much house. The proposed modifications which need to be implemented to circumvent the design guidelines or alternatively to comply with the design guidelines would both permit the applicant to get what they want in terms of a design of a house as well as protect the view corridor. So your applicant request, the appeal be granted, the project be returned to ASEC. So hopefully the matter can be studied, comply with SEQA and comply with the design guidelines. Thank you. I'm all ready for any questions? In absent any questions, I'll turn it over to Carter.
And Carter, you got about five minutes. I'll let you know when we get down to the bottom of that. Okay.
Great. I will be brief. As most of you know, I practiced architecture in Portola Valley for 32 years. I volunteered on the ASEC for 21 years. I reviewed hundreds of projects on the ASEC and I've designed hundreds of projects, you know, in Portola Valley. My experience is, you know, that this project did not do its best, you know, through the designer view process to mitigate, you know, the massing of the second floor. The massing of the second floor, you know, is the problem. It will, you know, the recommendations that I'm making will not reduce, you know, the, the mass, you know, to an insignificant amount of impact, but it will reduce the mass, you know, to such degree that it will balance the needs and rights of the property owner, you know, at the Gambier's property, you know, and help to mitigate the impacts, you know, on the Kang's property. As you can see in this diagram, you know, where the blue, you know, is, is outlined, there are, this is on the second floor plan. There are two exterior decks that are within the mass, you know, of Mr. Spiegel's cedar wrap of the building, which exacerbates the length of the building by 16 feet. The view, you know, in my experience, you know, as an ASEC member, this would have been low hanging fruit for the ASEC to request that that space be reduced. And as such, that was my recommendation on August 7th, you know, when I met with, you know, Dan Spiegel, you know, was to move the master suite 16 feet, you know, further east, reduce the mass by 16 feet and comply with the Westridge Committee's, you know, recommendation, you know, to slide the building, you know, six to eight feet, you know, closer to the garage, you know, reducing, you know, the, the link between the building, you know, and the garage. The resulting reduction, you know, in the impact on the Kang's view would be to reduce the building's impact by 24 feet. It maintains all of the programmatic elements, you know, in their, you know, desired locations except for, you know, outdoor decks that are within the mass of a building. This seems simple to me. I don't understand why, you know, Mr. Spiegel and, you know, the Gambiers didn't take this recommendation. This, you know, I've been able to, you know, convince the Kings, the Kongs that this is about as good as you're going to get within the normal ASEC process. But the normal ASEC process was impacted by, you know, the politics, you know, and the pandemic, you know, of, you know, what was going on, you know, during the, the spring and summer, you know, of 2020. It was an awful year, but I don't think the Kings, you know, should, you know, be subjected, you know, to an incomplete and I think, you know, inaccurate, you know, minute, you know, level of mitigation. You know, the mitigations that the ASEC asked for, you know, included lowering the height and moving, you know, the, the mass of the building. The mass of the building wasn't moved one bit. It wasn't reduced one bit except for one foot in height, you know. And I don't believe, you know, in my history of, of ASEC being both, you know, on, you know, the applicant's side, you know, and on the review side, that the mitigations that the ASEC, you know, required of this project, you know, come anywhere near, you know, correcting the relationship between these buildings. I don't want to get into anything else. I came to this, you know, to help resolve in a win-win situation, you know, where, you know, the Gambiers get the program and the building that they want and the Kang's, you know, Kongs, you know, get, you know, impact as little as, as would be, you know, normal within the normal ASEC process. I believe the town is better than this. I, I don't understand why, you know, I, I come to find that Dylan never visited the site during the entire review process, you know, until this week. It is insane, you know, for planning staff, you know, to make recommendations for approval to the ASEC without seeing, you know, what's going on. And, and the relationship between buildings and sites and sites and buildings is something that the town has been excellent, you know, for, you know, all of the years the town has been, you know, been in existence. The reason that there hasn't been an appeal is that this has been the most poorly reviewed and poorly recommended, you know, project in the history that I can remember in all 32 years that I've been, you know, practicing in this town. And I don't believe, you know, that, you know, this design has been mitigated to the level, you know, that would be expected under the normal, you know, designer view process. I believe the town is better than this. I pray, you know, that the town council, you know, sends this back to the ASEC, you know, to re-review, you know, the impact on the view. I think the impact of the view is important. You know, it is not insignificant, you know, in the way that it's, you know, been created. And I think that the outdoor spaces on that second floor are superfluous and should be, you know, eliminated or reduced to just outdoor spaces that are not within, you know, the, the mass of the building so that the mass, master bedroom can be moved over 16 feet. And, you know, and to comply with the Westridge Committee's recommendation, you know, to collapse, collapse the space between the garage and the house another six to eight feet, you know, so that the, the amount of reduction is about 24 feet. And I believe the town is better than this and the ASEC can keep moving forward. And I think I'm done, Jeremy.
Thanks, Carter.
Or Jeremiah.
Maybe today.
Jeremiah Johnson. I know you know the song. Can you sing it for us?
Not tonight.
Okay. If Jeremy's not going to sing, does anyone on the council have a question of the appellant? Or his attorney or Carter? Wait, do I see a hand?
Craig's got his hand up.
Oh, great. Thank you. Craig?
Yes, my question is, is really to the, the question of the SEQA exemption. And Stephen, maybe you could clarify for me if the, if the design guidelines are guidelines as we had explained earlier and the ASEC is not required and they have discretion to follow or not follow any individual or set of guidelines. What's, I'm trying to better understand why you them exercising their discretion would lead to an exemption from SEQA.
Okay. So let's, let's, it's a real simple analysis. You have a design guideline. That's true. The town has adopted the design guidelines by and codified it. It's been adopted by the council. And it's in your code. Now that doesn't, that, so that means that the ASEC must, you know, follow the guidelines. The guidelines are just that. They're the guidelines. They don't require, you know.
They have to use the guidelines in the order.
They have to, they have to use the guidelines and SEQA applies, the analysis of SEQA applies. That doesn't mean that SEQA says, okay, if there's one iota of impact on a view corridor, that you can't approve it. That does not, but it says, but what it does say is you must evaluate and do a SEQA analysis. And that SEQA analysis, as you all know, is you either find it has, you know, no impact or it has an impact, but it can be, you can have a negative declaration mitigated, mitigate negative declaration or God forbid, you have to do an EIR, but you have to go through the analysis. It's a, I don't want to say it's a check the box, but it, there's a lot of boxes and you guys have seen it. There's a lot of boxes to go through and analyze. It's not been done here. Does that help?
I, I understand your point now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Jeff? John? All right. Then I will open the public hearing. And anyone from the public is free to ask a question or make a comment. I'm not seeing, I don't see any hands. Do you wait? There went a hand. Okay. Monica?
Hey Monica, you need to unmute at your end.
Sorry about that. Hi everyone. Monica Chaney here from 158 Goya.
Please go ahead.
Okay, great. So I'm, to introduce myself, I'm the neighbor at the property uphill from the Kong's house and two neighbors uphill from the Gambier's home. And I'm calling in to give my support for confirming the approval of the Gambier proposed property construction. I have attended a couple of these hearings and listened very carefully, most recently at the Planning Commission hearing. And, you know, I, I'm, first of all, I just wish for peace on our streets. And I, I wish that this were, were not the case for all involved. Think it's been a hard enough year. And really at the end of the day, when I listen, I, I think, to me, the question is, is this reasonable? I think it is. I think secondly, that we have a bigger problem on our hands. If, if private property owners cannot understand the bundle of sticks that they own when they go to purchase a property. And it is my understanding that the Gambier project does not require any sort of variances. It is within the standard rules and regulations. I understand you will call them design guidelines and the, both the ASEC and the Planning Commission felt that they were within those rules and regulations. And I'm very concerned if we begin opening up things like SEQA for residential homeowners who have a view from their house. That would mean that say half of Portola Valley has to go and either conduct a full-scale EIR or at least get to a mitigated negative declaration. And I, I think that's sort of out of the question legally speaking. And then in terms of the view corridor or the views that are affected and whether they comply with our guidelines, I, I think, how, how are we supposed to build homes in Portola Valley if you think you know what your sort of legal rights are and then it turns out those are not in fact strong and robust? And while I wish that this could have been sort of, you know, settled in a, in a more amicable way, I, at the same time, I do think there was a lot of effort made about that. And that was detailed quite heavily in some of the previous hearings. And at the end of the day, I just think, you know, how do we want to treat the people in our community who are trying to build a home? I, I shudder to think how much money has gone into this project. And I understand that's true on both sides as well. I, I am sympathetic to people who are concerned about people building a property next to theirs or downhill from theirs. Look, I'm the uphill neighbor. I, I can understand those concerns, but I, I, I can't understand how really, I think as a town council, since this is really a higher level meeting and it's not one in which we're going to probably re-review every rule that the ASEC reviewed and the Planning Commission reviewed. I think one of our higher level questions is how do we want to treat people who are building homes that comply with what are generally perceived to be the guidelines? And so anyway, that's it. I, I'm, I'm sorry we're all here and I want to give my support as the, I guess, most uphill neighbor. So, you know, I don't think it's a waste of time to hear from us. Thank you all for your time and I wish everyone the best.
Thank you, Monica. Gil Kilman?
Where'd you go, Gil?
Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Great. Yes, it's Gil and Yasmin Climen here. We're at 128 Goya, which is another uphill neighbor on the other side of the property from Monica. And we built our home here in 2009. It went through a similar process. We'd like to thank all the different committees that approved us and it was a terrific process for us. So, you know, one comment I think we want to make upfront is there was some discussion here that was, I think, questioning the integrity of this process. And I really hope that we don't go down that route from everything we've seen in the meetings we've listened to here. This is a very high quality series of committees with a high integrity process operating through COVID. So I think although the outcome may not be what the appellant here may want, I think questioning the integrity of the process is probably not a good direction to go. This seems like a fairly straightforward type of situation. We've owned several view properties to them in Portola Valley. The very first part of any due diligence for real estate property that has a view and that's considered some of the values to assess what the future impediments could be on the view. And we're dealing with, I think, a very common process here. If anyone has gone to the Kang's property, which we have seen it from the Gambier's property, it would be quite obvious that there was an older house in front that if somebody wanted to. That if somebody wanted to approve it, would probably, could be expanded and might slightly reduce the view. And I think we have some good guidelines around that, thanks to the town, that would give us any purchase, there are some ideas of what might be done. And from everything we can see here, the whole project falls within the guidelines, it's been approved by multiple committees. So I hate to make an analogy to current events, but it seems like we're trying to overturn something that's been certified several times. And so that would require, I think, some pretty unusual circumstances to do that. So we're, you know, highly supportive of this project, which seems like it's been well planned. It seems like there have been good, good faith efforts to try to, to improve it, to minimize the potential impact. And so we hope to see it go forward and I think we would echo Monica's opinions here about this is, we would not want to see our town. Get the reputation that it was difficult to develop these properties, this town has a lot of older homes that need to be developed and approved, which is to the advantage of the town. And to have this be the process that somebody would have to go through, I think would be a major discouragement to anyone. Who was interested in really making an investment in what, what would be an improvement to a neighborhood. So thank you all for your hard work here and we just wanted to give our strong affirmation that we hope this project can go forward.
Thank you, Gil. Would any other member of the public like to speak?
I see no other hands.
Then I will close, I just, here's my hand gavel, I will close the public hearing. And I will come back and invite the applicant to make closing remarks, brief closing remarks.
Thank you very much. Again, we appreciate the attention of this project by the entire town and by the council tonight. And disappointed, but frankly not surprised by a number of the claims made by the appellant's team tonight. First, they seem unwilling to acknowledge that a number of different authoritative bodies have, in fact, heard their complaint and rendered a judgment. And they're so unwilling to receive this feedback that they did not even bother to update the appeal statement for this hearing. Simply resubmitting the same document from the planning appeal, refusing even to reflect upon the findings of the planning commission. Mr. Ward is no longer on the A S C C and has been hired to fight this project and so it's not a surprise that he does not support it. I don't believe he was present at the first A S C C meeting, so I don't know how he can speak to how that process was conducted. But, or how COVID could have had an impact on this A S C C review. And I should point out that we had two hearings and not the customary one to receive feedback and. Comment from the town and the community and then make adjustments, then resubmit. And then the commissioners were clearly satisfied with the degree to which we mitigated the project because they voted to approve it by a four one vote. And of course, they all visited the site, so there's no question that they knew what the project was, what it was all about. Second, the neighbors will have every opportunity to build the home of their dreams as they say they intend to do. Applying the exact same zoning standard as we and everyone else in the town have. And their site is twenty feet higher, so I'm sure the results will be spectacular. Third, there's been a lot of discussion of what has been taken away, but this seems to be the wrong way to think about it to me. All properties are different, some have different views, some have different slopes, some have different soil conditions. And these differences are reflected in property values and other measures like that. And as anyone who's considered property value or construction can tell you, there are ways of evaluating these differences. One of these ways is to consider the possibility of future development, as Mr. Clamen helpfully pointed out. Both on the site and on the surrounding sites. And this should be considered ahead of time, not just retroactively. So if you buy a house next to an empty lot, you have the right to expect that nothing will ever be built there just because you're used to nothing being there. It's not a reasonable expectation and it wouldn't be reasonable to impose upon another property owner. Furthermore, that's not how a neighborhood works. Fourth, while it's true that we have not been able to come to an agreement, it's certainly untrue that we haven't tried. Mrs. Gambier provide the, the tenant of the one forty eight property, the set of plans on January fifth. She wrote that it was beautiful and said she would forward it to the owners. I met with the Kang's on February sixth, twenty twenty, was told they would only accept the single story, which I must reiterate again, is not the rule of the town. And said that they would not meet me again, that I should contact their architect. For over two weeks after the first A S C C meeting, they wouldn't even bother to respond to my request for a meeting. We then took a flurry of meetings with the neighbors, with Mr. Stotler, with Mr. Ward, the days before the second A S C C hearing. Even just this afternoon, Mrs. Gambier and I met with Mr. Ward, at which point he rehashed his unmodified proposal from early August. Failing to adapt to, to the two approvals that occurred in the meantime. He then warned of further delays, whatever that means. All the same, we're asking you to uphold this approval, not based on what they haven't done, but based on the things that we have done. We're proposing a project that is thoughtful, that's sustainable, that's responsive to site, it's deferential to the landscape and innovative. One that we feel will reflect well upon Portola Valley. I'm disappointed that the neighbors continue to refuse to acknowledge the results of three decisive actions by Portola Valley's commissioners. But I respect their right to appeal. Now this process has run its course, time matters and we have all spent a great deal of time on this project. Rules matter and we have all, we have followed the rules and guidelines throughout the process. We feel that Portola Valley should continue to be a place where if you follow the process, build a broad consensus and follow the rules, you should be able to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I would like to invite the appellant to make closing remarks.
Carter, could you make a final closing statement for us?
I think. The general site planning, the general massing of, of, you know, the Gambier, you know, design is quite good. I. I do not feel, you know, that the impact of the second floor massing on the western end, you know, of the second floor. Has been adequately mitigated, you know, to comply, you know, with what the intent was, you know, of the design guidelines, you know, codified, you know, by the ordinance. The recommendations that I've made are quite simple to employ. And they would be approvable, you know, under the A S C C. And they would be acceptable to the cons. We're not expecting, you know, to have all of the view impacts mitigated. But that, you know, the design was adequately mitigated. You know, I believe that the town's better than that. And I do think that the, the impacts of the year of two thousand twenty, you know, had an impact on this. And I'd look forward to, you know, the town council, you know, recommending that the A S C C reconsider the recommendations that I've made.
Thank you, Carter. All right, now, taking this back to the town council. And Cara, please correct me if I'm wrong, or Laura, we basically have two questions to answer. Is the project exempt from Sequoia? Is the project consistent with the town's design guidelines? Am I correct?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, those are the two issues that the appellants have asserted in their appeal. The council also needs to make the findings that are required by the zoning code. And that are listed in the attached resolution. And those were previously made by the A S C C and planning commission. And some suggested findings are attached to the resolution in the packet.
Thank you, and Laura, there are four outcomes or options, correct? Is this correct? The first would be to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission approval. The second would be to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's approval with some additional conditions. The third would be to approve the appeal and rescind the planning commission approval, which may result in remanding the project to A S C C for additional consideration. And the fourth would be continue the discussion to a future meeting, am I correct?
Those are correct.
All right. Okay, who would like to start the discussion?
I'll start.
Hey Jeff?
Okay, thank you all, you know, having, having reviewed the, the, all the data in the packet and having heard these presentations. I have to say that I, there is a high bar here for, for finding anything other than upholding the findings of the planning commission and the A S C C. And given the work those two bodies put into this. And just the fact that my, my respect for those two bodies, I, I do not see a basis for overturning what they have done. So I would be comfortable making the findings that, that, that we are being asked to make in denying the appeal. You know, the design guidelines are guidelines and they're messy because some of them do conflict with each other. You know, there's a guideline about the view corridors, there's also a guideline about, we don't want overly disturbed sites. It's not perfect. But, you know, I, I having, I was on A S C C for three years before I joined the council, you know, you, you have to balance all the guidelines against each other. I, from visiting the site briefly and, and reading through all the applications, I think the A S C C actually did a fine job of doing that. The project as well within all the setbacks and height requirements, there is, I will not say there is no impact on, on the view corridor from one forty eight. But the guidelines do not guarantee that there will be no impacts on a view corridor, as they ask us to consider those court, those impacts. And, and mitigate them accordingly, I believe this was reasonably considered in the course of this project. You know, I, the mention was made that the A S C C's process was not good. My understanding is that, that this, this project received more or less the same attention than any other A S C C project has received. Including site visits from the commission during A S C C in the course of product, project review. Again, knowing the A S C C commissioners well and, and, and having worked with them all, I have no doubt that they actually did their, their usual very good work on this project. And again, see no reason or need to, to ask them to do this over again, especially after all the time that's been spent on this. My understanding of the sequel question, well, I, I, the idea that residential projects to start becoming, should start being subject to Sequoia. It is, is frankly a nightmare. I, I, the idea that we'd start requiring these because, you know, because one neighbor objects to something. Just sets the stage for all kinds of abuses of Sequoia, frankly, I, I just, I, I understand what Sequoia is here and what it is for. But it is simply, I, I, the idea that this project is not exempt from Sequoia would, would honestly, I think it would be a nightmare for staff and other applicants. Again, I, I do not, I have, I can make the findings that would go into denying the appeal and I will listen, I will listen to my colleagues. But that's where I stand at this moment, so thank you.
Okay, so you're choosing number one, which is deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission approval, correct?
I'm not, I'm not choosing it yet, I'm, I'm, that's my position, I just want to, I will, I will hear other arguments, but that is just, I just stated that as my entering position here.
Thank you.
I'll go next.
All right, John?
All right. Well, I'm sad to see that a project devolved into this conflict. Always unfortunate and I think really unnecessary in, in town. We've clearly got a rather difficult site that this new project has been situated on, it's got a very constrained site. Which drives, really drives the sighting with almost no options to make it any different. My main focus has been on the process and I am very satisfied that the process is followed, just as it was, has been in a very thorough manner. As far as the. Potential sequel analysis goes, in, in a matter of practicality, it has the view. The, the view issue has been analyzed thoroughly by first the A S C C and then planning commission. And now both the applicant and the, and the appellant, I, I think we can, that's, that's been taken care of. I, I think that as Jeff said, getting into throwing the Sequoia requirements at residential would be an absolute nightmare. And, and kind of nonsensical, it is not designed for this type of project in, in the first place. I'm, I'm pretty confident at this point that I would be able to. Uphold the original approval and deny the, the challenge to the, to the project. Those are my comments for now.
All right, thanks, John. Craig?
Yeah, I, you know, I've reviewed the record thoroughly, I've been on site, looked at it. Looked through staff's recommended resolution and I'm comfortable making all of the findings that they suggest. I think it's very clear that the project complies with everything it's required to comply with. The sequel question for me, you know, I, I understand the appellant's quest, I think, through their written submission and through the discussion here tonight. I, I wouldn't comment as to whether it would in fact be the case that, that that argument were to apply. But it seems to be premised on the design guidelines not having been complied with. But as we've discussed, you know, the design guidelines are guidelines and, and not every single one of them needs to be complied with. I do find that on balance, the proposed project does comply with the design guidelines and therefore. There is no exemption to the categorical Sequoia exemption, there are no exceptions to the exemption. And so therefore, I, I don't think that Sequoia should apply here. So I am also comfortable supporting the original A S C decision in denying the applicant, the appeal.
All right, I don't have a lot more to add, I have seen both sites. I have read all the documents, I attend, I was in the Zoom meeting when the planning commission considered this. I too can make all the findings, it's obviously conforms to the general plan, it conforms to the zoning code. It conforms to the, well, let me stay with Sequoia, let me go back. This, the argument with Sequoia, that we have codified our design guidelines. And therefore, we have to apply them as if they're written in stone. And specifically the view preservation principle, which is always wiggly. And because of all this, it triggers a sequel analysis. I'm not an attorney, but it just doesn't, that doesn't, that argument does not hold any water with me. And I guess it's because, as we've said so many times tonight, the design guidelines are guidelines, as John said, who was one of the authors. They are supposed to be flexible and views are tricky. When we bought our house, I live in Westridge as well and sit on top of a canyon. And had a very nice view towards Jasper Ridge. Well, along comes Lou Platt, who at the time was the CEO of H P, buys the whole property, which was, I don't even know how many acres. Builds a huge road to get to the huge house and we were spitting mad. But you know what happened over time, we planted trees and I don't even see the house anymore. But I was really, really angry when it happened and there was nothing we could do. And I think if you talk to people in Portola Valley, you're going to find many, many stories like this. So. I agree, it is not exempt from Sequoia and as far as being consistent with the design guidelines, it is consistent with the design guidelines. I'm really sorry because I understand how painful this has been for both parties. And I know that the appellant wants a different answer, but I don't think you're going to get one from us here tonight. Do any of my colleagues want to make further comments?
Yes, I just want to say for the record, I too visited both sites while we were preparing for this meeting. So just wanted to make clear that we've all actually been out and seen the sites personally. I would be, I'd be, I could make a motion if, if you're ready for one.
Yep, it's, there's.
Yes, I, I won't read all of it. I, I move to approve the resolution as written, starting on page red one, red page one twenty.
I'll second that.
Cara, is that adequate for a motion?
I believe she mouthed, yes, that's fine.
Oh, okay. I haven't perfected the. I haven't perfected the lip reading. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second discussion. All right, roll call, Sharon.
Councilmember Alfs.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Okay. There you have it. Thank you all for meeting tonight. I hope that we can move on here. How about taking a little break? Is that okay?
Take a five minute break?
Yeah. And then you can text Sarah that she can come back.
Yeah, she's aware. So let's say we'll be back here. Let's call it, let's call it, get everybody getting back here about nine fifteen. That's four and a half minutes from now, it looks like.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Is Sarah here? Yes, she is. Okay. Ready, Jeremy?
I'm ready.
All right, we are moving on to item nine on our regular agenda. It is the Woodside Highlands Road Maintenance District Residents Advisory Committee, creation of a council subcommittee to hold interviews. Jeremy, are you going to explain this one?
Yes, I have a, just a brief oral presentation. The council, as you know, last year restructured the, what was then called the Citizens Advisory Board of the Woodside Highlands Road Maintenance District into its current format. This is a body that advises the district, which is the council, on issues related to road improvements in the Woodside Highlands area, particularly off of Santa Maria Road. The council's next step is to make appointments to that body in conversations with the mayor and the vice mayor in lieu of what would be a very lengthy interview process at a council meeting. The decision was made that a subcommittee of the council could instead meet, conduct those interviews next week and provide recommendations to the council on those they believe should be appointed to the, the committee. So tonight, we were asking for two members of the council to be appointed to that committee. This is a fairly quick turnaround. We'll be looking at dates next week. Either one or two days to conduct those interviews. There's a number of candidates. Sharon can tell us the exact amount, but I think it's close to a baker's dozen. There is one outstanding issue that was brought up by the chair of the Woodside Highlands Improvement Association, Teresa Godfrey, a member of the Improvement Association, has stated that they had applied for appointment to the body. We did not receive their application in lieu of the council tonight, making a determination on whether they should be included in the, in the process. What I'd like to do is have the subcommittee formed and then I can confer with them tomorrow and how we'd like to move forward. And then either invite that person to participate or not. It will be a bit of a commitment to the council members. So I want to thank those two who self-select themselves in advance because it will be some time. But I think it's an important next step in, in restructuring this and to the official committee structure at the town. That concludes my report.
Okay, before I ask for volunteers, does anyone have a question? Okay, whose hand is that?
That's Caroline Vertonghen's hand up. It's a public comment.
From the, okay, so first I'm going, Carolyn, first I'm going to the council. Okay, nobody on the council has a question? Can, can I go to the public now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Does anyone in the public have a question besides Carolyn? You are on.
Thank you. I just have a general question about the subcommittees when they're formed. When I review the handbook, it seems like the subcommittee has to somehow disclose their findings at the regular meetings. Isn't that true?
Through the chair, subcommittees of the council are formed to work on discrete tasks on behalf of, of the council and are per practice, per, per practice come forward to the council to announce recommendations, decisions and the like. So a recommendation from the subcommittee would be made next, at the next meeting on the 27th. Or we may want to move that a little bit depending on whether we can get all the applicants in for interviews, but that would be, that's very standard to do.
Yes, but is this in writing? Because I haven't seen them. There's several subcommittees and then I, I attend these meetings. Let's say a subcommittee for the finance committee. And I don't see their findings being proposed or discussed at the next meeting.
You may be confusing subcommittees of committees and subcommittees of the council. Either way, subcommittees can present their recommendations or findings in writing or orally at the meeting.
But either way, they should do either one of them. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that's typically what they do. They meet on an ad hoc basis. So that might be some of the confusion you're discussing as well. So they don't always come forward with recommendations on a regular basis. Craig?
If I may, through the chair, it's also possible that a subcommittee won't have anything to report to back to the main committee. So if it was a, if they were tasked with doing a particular piece of work and they do that piece of work, then may not necessarily report that as long as there were no hiccups and nothing to report that was unexpected by the main committee that delegated authority of the subcommittee to do whatever they did.
Thank you.
Ready, Teresa Godfrey?
Hold on, Teresa. There you go. You need to unmute it. You're in, Teresa.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everybody, for taking, taking your time this evening. I just wanted to make a point of clarification that this resident advisory committee is just a renaming of an already existing committee that the Woodside Highlands Improvement Association through its road committee has been acting in its place. And there are already current members of that road committee. Many of those members have applied for this retitled committee. And so I just wanted to let whoever is going to be on the subcommittee for interviews, that there's already a group that has been functioning for many years, providing service for this particular task at hand. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. So do I have volunteers to be on the subcommittee such, for example, Craig?
Um, yes, I, I believe Cara, I'm far enough from any of the roads that are covered by the Woodside Highlands Road Maintenance District that I am not conflicted from this. Is that correct?
You're on mute, Cara.
She's doing it again.
My ventriloquist skills are not very good these days. So Craig, you know what? We'd have to take a look at the, at the buffer map. You could, well, it should, it should be okay. We can, we can take a look at that tomorrow and you might want to appoint, you know, an alternate in, in case you do have a problem.
Okay, so I'm, I'm happy to do it as long as I have no conflict. I would recommend then that we do appoint an alternate just in case I can't do it. So we should find a second member and then an alternate in case I can't.
Okay, first, let's do the second member.
I would be willing to have a question for Cara as well. I've probably done 10 or 15 projects up on that area. And so I'd be very likely have a former or a current client as one of the applicants. It might be more awkward than anything, but I
Right. That's not a conflict. The political reform act, so you're okay there.
Okay, Craig and John, so who wants to be the alternate? It's either Jeff or Sarah.
That could be the alternate.
Okay.
Or Mary Ann.
Nope.
So through the chair, I will
Oh, I'm sorry. Formation to create the subcommittee and appoint.
Okay, but, but likely Craig will be able to do this.
I think so.
Cara will look into it and let us know, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll let Jeff know if he needs to be the, if he needs to do it.
Thank you, Jeff. So do we need a motion for this, Cara?
So moved.
Oh, do
Second.
Right. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Alfs.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
So through the chair, we'll, I'll have a conversation with Craig and John tomorrow. We've tentatively scheduled this for the 27th, which means we'll try to get these interviews done next week. If there are any logistical issues, we'll simply extend the recommendation to the next council meeting. We should be able to get everything done by then for sure. So.
All right. Thank you for stepping up and doing this. Moving on to item number 10. Study session code compliance survey.
That would be me as well, Mayor Derwin. An item that should be familiar to you in that last year shortly before COVID, there was a conversation at the council level about going out to the community and determining people's opinions on a whole suite of code compliance and code enforcement related issues. I attached to this, some, the discussion from a year ago. Per the direction of the council, we've prepared as attachment to the a suggested set of questions for a survey to go out to residents. It's fairly exhaustive, although we may not have caught everything. This is certainly one of the things we wanted to ask you about tonight. As you can see from a review of the survey on red page 260 on, we're trying to determine a few things. What residents' general experiences with code compliance issues have been, either with their neighbors or the town? What types of issues are they concerned about? What issues are they not concerned about? And what issues do they think should be elevated in some fashion, including whether there should be fines and the like? It's a lot to ask residents, it's a lot to do, but I do think that there's going to be a level of interest because most residents have probably had some experience with the code compliance issue in the past. Part of this conversation is born out of what is a perception among staff and also that I heard from council members that the, there's been some change in the way that residents, some residents at least have been relating to code enforcement issues, not so much at times reliance and talking to your neighbors, more reliance on staff. Some of the issues getting more complicated and it's not as simple as it used to be where we just call somebody up and say, hey, you know, there's something going on. Would you consider doing something different? So this is an attempt to see what the pulse of the residents are who participate in the survey. Our plan is to have it out for a period of time and bring that back as a basis for a continued conversation on these issues that we can then present some potential recommendations on, on next steps. So we'd love to hear your feedback on what's been prepared as the draft survey, any suggestions and the like. Thank you.
Okay, let's start with questions.
Yeah. Question, just one thing that, that occurred to me was, would it be of any use or would it be helpful to ask in addition to the question of whether or not anyone has reported a perceived code compliance issues as how they reported it by phone or by, by email or PB connect or just to have that information? I don't know if that would be something, might be useful on top of the rest of it.
Sure. If that's the
Yeah, good. Yes, Sarah.
I love this idea. I think one of the things that's going to be really important is response rate. Just a lot of people, as we know, when we do messaging, don't get the message, you know, despite best efforts. And so I just would recommend that that's really thought through. Another thing is, this is just kind of a, a marketing thought. When an average person hears code compliance, they don't really know, you know, what that means. And so I think we should be careful in terms of what, how we reference this so that people really understand the kind of feedback that we're looking for and, and it'll, I think it'll help motivate them to respond. And then my last comment was more of a question and, and this isn't really, if, if this is out of scope because it's not specific to the survey, is how do other towns handle this type of thing? I know one of the items in here is a suggestion to use a free conflict resolution mediator. Is that kind of a standard practice in towns that are bigger than ours or how, what is the best practice here? Because I definitely can't imagine how this becomes cumbersome. I was just curious how it's typically handled.
Yeah. So going backwards, most cities have a contract with, in this case, Penice Conflict Resolution Center. It is not often used. So my experience in other communities that I have worked in, even having the contract, if it's suggested, very few people do utilize it. But it is a tool that is available to us and we do from time to time suggest that to residents currently. The PCRC also has some expanded tools that would be available if we wanted to augment the contract as well. But it, it isn't really something that most cities use regularly in any way. The, you know, Portola Valley is fairly unique in that it's been able to hold on to for a very, very long time and continues to hold on to. To some extent, this neighbors working with neighbors concept that doesn't exist in larger cities, that does require something a little more administrative. And that's certainly not something we want to construct, but caring for residents would help us understand, you know, what that, you know, what that could potentially look like. Most cities of a certain size have someone dedicated to a portion of code compliance or code enforcement work. Just to give you a scale to other communities that I worked in, the county of San Mateo, which was, the population's about 75,000 people, had three code compliance officers. When I worked in Palo Alto, a little smaller, same amount, two and a half. Code compliance is among the trickier issues that any city has to deal with. It is a bit of an orphan. It doesn't neatly fit into the structure of, of government organizations perfectly. They typically live in planning and building, but these are not planning and building issues. We have a little bit of time from a member of the staff who works on some of these issues, but it's sort of spread out though amongst others, depending on the type of issue. And Laura and I have talked a bit about what this could look like in the future, whether it should be in her shop or not. Code compliance is an almost exclusively reactive experience. We do not drive around town looking for code issues to cite people on. We, it requires residents to notify us and then we go out and have a conversation with the resident about what that issue is. So, you know, we don't want to confuse anybody about what we're suggesting here. It really does mean that someone needs to use a PB connect tool primarily, but call us as well. Log the issue and then we can go out and take a look at what it is. Not all issues are equal. It is easier to determine whether there's been a code compliance issue on an unpermitted construction related activity than it is the use of a, of a unpermitted leaf blower, for instance. Noise issues are typically fairly hard to determine. We also don't want to turn everybody into their own police. That's not what this is supposed to be. Recently, you may have recalled that I had posted something on PB form around the dog leash conversation. We, we want to continue to emphasize that the best result comes from talking to your neighbor about what the issue is. And, and that's always going to come with the best results. But are there things that are important to people, that are important to the council that we need to create different tools around? Or de-emphasize on some level because it just isn't, it isn't an issue of note. I hope that's helpful.
Definitely. I think, I mean, my, my main comment really is the sample size I do think is important because I would hate to just get responses from the outliers, you know, on, on something like this.
It, um,
Really skew the data
Yeah.
Relative to, you know, what the average person in town cares about.
And frankly, we likely will, yes.
Yeah, well, we're going to hear from
We get, we'll mitigate that at least.
Agreed, agreed. Yeah, yeah.
I, I, there's certainly always a group of people who participate because they've had individual experience I, there's certainly always a group of people who participate because they've had individual experience that they want to highlight. So people who are very concerned about noise, they're going to write us because they had that experience. It's the holy grail of government trying to contact people who are sort of in that middle range. You don't necessarily want to speak up, don't have a particular issue. So I'm sure we'll hear from people who are familiar to us on some level because they've come to us in the past about the issues that are concerning to them. That's important to hear. And it just a suggestion and Sarah, just not to put you on the spot, but if the council is okay with it, I'd love to work with Sarah a little bit on this to see if we can fine tune it and get the right people and see how this works if that's okay.
Sure.
Thanks, Sarah.
I have a question, Jeremy. Well, two questions. The first is, do we have the bandwidth? To do this?
We have the bandwidth to conduct a survey?
No, no, no. After we do this, okay, what happens after we do the survey?
Well, I think it partially depends on what data we receive and direction from the council. If there is a ground swell interest in a particular type of code enforcement work, we'll have to determine what the, what the FTE would be related to supporting that. It, this is also about setting expectations with the community. It's a totally appropriate for code compliance response to take some time depending on the nature of it. Some are require something more immediate than others. So if residents understand it's a process, then I think we can, we can accommodate that. This, I, one of the reasons that staff is certainly supportive of what the council suggested is that this will help us understand what it looks like in the future. Because right now, the current structure of code compliance in Portola Valley supports much more the neighbor and neighbor conversation, and that does appear to be changing in some fashion. So we need to understand what we may need to recommend to the council in the future to support those efforts. As a reminder, the last time the town had a a an employee that worked on building issues, that person did do some code compliance work. I don't know that that's a great model in the future. That's a blending of two very different expertise, but it was a reflection of how much building time we thought we needed and to give that person enough time to be full time. This is not full-time work by any stretch of the imagination, but if we, in that, the but is we have to set the expectations appropriately of the community about what that would look like in response to various issues. You know, the other thing I should note on here is there are things that we don't do. We don't mitigate a fence on somebody else's property. If there's two neighbors with a fence, that's a simple thing. We, we don't get involved in that. So there's going to be probably some comments on things we simply don't do and we'll have an opportunity for education with the community as well.
Sorry to interrupt, but that's what I was thinking. And also the survey itself will be educational, I would think.
Yes. I asked Laura to continue to stick around tonight, just in case you had any more specific questions around some of the things that she deals with. You know, we, we have the building side here, so she can obviously answer any questions there. That's a, that's a good chunk of what we hear from folks. If I was to sort of, if I was to tell you which ones I think we hear the most about, it's going to be construction-related activity. Dogs off leash are becoming more of an issue in town. Noise issue, the leaf blower thing will be a big deal very quickly for us. And lighting, I think, are the ones that probably we get the most of here. Signage can ebb and flow depending if there's an election going on, depending if there's something happening on a street. So, yeah, I think the education is a huge component of this as well, just to let residents kind of know what this is and then we can create the program.
Are there other questions from the council? Okay, does everybody?
Marianne, I actually added a question. Sorry, I was, I was, I was using my actual hand, not my.
Oh, sorry.
Icon. Question. So one thing we've been talking about a little bit is this, this, you know, some ASCC commissioners have highlighted, which is people sort of coming back after their final approvals and doing things that weren't part of their original approval. It's sort of, I mean, it sort of falls under building. I don't know if we want to get too, like, I don't know if we want to sort of prompt to a response to explicitly, but is that, do you feel like that's covered adequately? Like, do people have an adequate sort of place in here to, to report that or?
Laura, if you have any follow-up to what I'm going to say, please jump in. You know, lighting tends to be a big issue.
Yeah.
After the fact. The other one would be the removal of trees.
That or the, or the planting of.
You know, okay, looking at it now, I don't. We may want to, we could put a tree one here. I'm not sure that, that might be confusing though as well for people. So I want, I don't want them to think that any tree that gets removed at any time is an issue in and of itself.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure there's an action item. I just, I just was thinking of that. That particular item is one that's fresh in my mind. And I just wanted to.
Thanks for.
Thought about whether it's, yeah.
On that question, I know we had discussion last year, Laura, I think with and Cara, whether, whether conditions on projects approvals could essentially survive beyond the final sign off. Because as I understand it now, like if people are doing something that doesn't require a permit, just because they happen to do it the day after they get the final sign off on their building, like they're, they're not actually necessarily in violation of anything. There's, there's not any code to enforce necessarily. Is that correct? Or have we figured out how to extend project requirements beyond the duration of the project?
We're working on it.
Yeah, we have been thinking about it and talking about it and ASCC is very interested in doing that. So we have, we do have some work we can do to strengthen some of our conditions of approval. We may start recording our conditions of approval so that they go with the land and any future owner would know about them. So there are some follow-up items that we can do to strengthen them somewhat. But then, you know, much further down the line, that's kind of where it crosses over into some code enforcement issues. If it's things like lighting that are just generally not in compliance.
Right. But I'm thinking more about landscaping issues where, you know, you, you can't really record, oh, this tree has to be there forever because 10 years later, the tree might die.
Things happen to trees.
Right.
So, so anyway, yeah, that, it's good to hear that that's ongoing. So that may help with some of those issues.
Yeah, I mean, just to pull back the curtain a little bit, I think that, you know, one of the things to put some words in Cara's mouth. I mean, they're, they're, I mean, if we were being really strict about this, we could probably use our current code to start to do this. But I think some of the thinking, at least from my end, for what it's worth, is that that might feel like a real big change without having the conversation and it might be good to kind of strengthen some of that stuff as part of the conversation. So and it's, you know, it's not perfectly clear whether everything can be included in that or not. So that's what we're talking about right now. And as Laura said, the ACC is very interested in this. So, you know, they, it gives the former commissioners, you know, and those who liaison. It is not uncommon to see changes afterwards and it can be as simple as the light can. It can be as big a deal as a tree going down or, or, you know, redwoods in a row or something like that. So that doesn't, we're, we're not thinking that that gets captured here exactly, but we are working on it.
Let's see.
Hold on, Betsy. There you go. Betsy, you need to unmute yourself if you can.
I wanted to comment on the, thank you for, for your, for making the effort to be exhaustive. And if it is to be exhaustive, is there a reason why you decided to leave out traffic and parking, which takes up a chunk of the municipal code? I, I do think, and I want to say that I think that the committee, the Traffic Safety Committee is doing a very nice job for you. But if the idea is for you to get information about where people's concerns are and then to educate them, I, I personally wouldn't leave out traffic and parking.
Through the chair, there was no proactive determination to leave that out. What I would say is that, you know, traffic issues generally are not under the purview of the town. So speeding and things of that nature, that's something that the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office does on our behalf.
Parking is.
Yeah, there are some parking issues that we could certainly include.
Okay, I would suggest maybe we add parking to sections one and two. That's just another bullet point. So add it, you know, somewhere in there. I, or before other maybe.
Thank you.
I was just going to say through the chair, sorry, I'm interested if you have any more thoughts about what aspects of, of parking you would be interested in learning more about. For example, you know, people legally have the right to park on the road, you know what I mean, near, near their houses and other places. And so if we want to ask the question and have an education component to it, if you could elaborate a little bit more, I think that would be helpful.
Maybe if instead of just saying parking, we say illegal parking or because I think that that's the kind of parking that we could actually enforce is where they're, they're violating code.
Yeah, it's through the chair, you know, it's something that, and we can certainly talk more about it tonight. But it's something that I also want to talk to Howard Young about. The, you know, the, we don't issue parking tickets. The San Mateo County Sheriff's Office does. The types of parking issues that, that we are hearing today, other than, you know, someone parks in a, in a spot that's perceived to be or is illegal. One issue that we're hearing is where there's a larger area that people do park on, on streets. We've seen this close properties that are close to Alpine Inn. People are concerned about that. We've heard from some residents in the Westridge area related to parking on that. I'm not sure that this is the vehicle to ask those questions because we're not asking people to regulate or change or create no parking areas in those places, but I just wanted to put that out. We're going to certainly work with Howard and Cara, but any other ideas? I didn't want to preclude the conversation. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to go over to the public. Karen?
There you go.
Hi, I would also like you to consider wildfire. There's a lot of concerns with neighbors, particularly in vegetation management, that they're not cleaning out their steep slopes or other issues. And I know that's not under the town's purveyance, like traffic isn't. But I don't think the residents really distinguish that and the survey could be comprehensive and perhaps feedback given on how to deal with these issues, it kind of in a more holistic approach.
Can you state your last name for the record?
This is Karen Batra.
Yeah, I knew it was, but just.
Yeah, it's just such a weird name that.
Through the chair, just a couple of thoughts, you know, certainly it's, the council can approve questions that the town doesn't regulate. You know, with any question that we do with code enforcement, people, a lot of code enforcement is perception. It isn't necessarily a code being broken. I don't, I think lots of residents understand what the Woodside Fire Protection District requires. Some may not. But we can certainly include a question around this issue that's tailored to, to get good information if the council so desires.
Okay, Rita.
Hold on. Oh, hold on a second. If, if you're done speaking, if you could lower your hand because I, unfortunately, I keep clicking on it. There we go. There you go, Rita.
Yeah, my two constant issues is smoking at different work sites all along Westridge. In front of my home, alongside my home at 300 Westridge, there's lots of cigarette butts. I've talked to Howard and they've cleaned it. I've, one day I picked up about 30 of them using gloves. But the second item is like when I see PG&E crews, sort of different crews along Westridge when I go hiking or walking and I see they're, under COVID guidelines, they're not wearing masks and they're, you know, two seconds from each other, you know, right next to each other and not wearing masks. But these are people that are coming into our town and they're not necessarily contractors working, but they're working for PG&E or for, you know, Cal Water and, and not wearing masks. And some are smoking while they're doing these different projects. What do we do? I mean, they are outside contractors working for PG&E. Is that something that we then call Howard? Or, and then they're, you know, they're in our community. They're going to possible restaurants or shopping in our community without wearing masks. And so should we add something for COVID or is the COVID guidelines stand on their own? Who do we call?
Jeremy, do you want to answer that one?
Okay, if we're speaking specifically to PG&E, my suggestion is to contact PGD and alert them that their crews are not following state guidance on COVID issues. It's not a function of the town. You know, we do our best and when we see folks egregiously violating COVID issues, you know, we do say something, but I think it would be appropriate as they're not town employees or they're not residents to contact PG&E directly.
Isn't there a county health number? I forget, like, didn't they set up 311 or 211 or 411 or 511 or 611? I forget what the number is, but Rita, you might.
Yeah, I believe it is 211. Yeah.
Might go to the San Mateo County Health website, Rita. I think there, there may be a number on there for, that has information about how to report.
It's 211. Yeah.
It was one of the 11s.
The county has a whole department that deals with code violations, but it's mostly businesses. But I'm sure they would be, they would be helpful.
I think the best bet though is to start with PG&E directly and let them.
Employee. Got it. Okay, Kristy.
Hello, thank you. I'm just wondering if surveys are great to pull information and rather than the title code compliance survey, it sounds so negative. How can we make this, you know, Portola Valley survey? What do you love about your city? What, what needs improvement? I mean, more casual, this sounds so regimented to me. And I know we need to get the information. Maybe you want to get the information, but how can we relax this a little bit to be truly our community would be? And, and I support what the other woman said about what can we do? Wildfire is a big thing right now. So what can, questions can we have around that? What can we do differently? What can we do better? I, I see this survey as kind of, let's do a town survey and positive and negative, but not just compliance survey, all negative. It doesn't feel like us to me. And that's, thank you. Please just take that into consideration when you're doing a survey and doing just one survey versus many on different subjects. Let's make it comprehensive. Thank you.
I believe Sarah was going to work on the, the title, right?
Happy to help.
Through the chair, I heard a request to add parking. Parking issues is appropriate. I heard a request to add how residents reported code compliance issues to the town. And then there were a number of additional suggestions from residents that you may or may not want to include.
But you're taking all the comments down and you'll go over them, correct?
Yeah, but I, I would like to hear some additional direction if any of the ones that I did not mention. Oh, you want me to go over them right now? Is that what you're saying?
The new ones. Yeah, could you go over them?
Yeah, so wildfire was one, whether people are doing wildfire clearance on their properties. One was related to COVID activity and one was related to smoking on properties, right away properties.
And parking.
Yeah, already got parking. It sounded like the council already wanted that. So I've got that one included.
I had one thing that, that came up just as we were taking questions. We've had a couple of instances of right-of-way violations, which is something that we enforce more than the public would want enforced. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm bringing it up because I'm trying to decide if it has any place here or not. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm bringing it up because I'm trying to decide if it has any place here or not. I'm curious to your staff's thought on that.
This is a, it's a good one, it's a hard one to describe in ten words or less. And I I would also suspect if there was a question on right of way. That, like some of these other ones, people don't necessarily know where the right of way is, so they make. They may have made assumptions about whether there was a violation or not.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean don't include it, but it's a, it's a little harder to, we could certainly come up with some language around it if the council so wish, but.
I actually, I. My feeling is actually no, I just, given how long it is already and how many things are, unless I'll make it more difficult for people to to give us feedback, just given that it's not. I mean, it's, 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 in some ways, it's more our problem and the public's problem.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other?
Craig has his.
Craig.
Yeah, I think on the on the other handful that we that we heard, you know, the COVID one, I think. One, it's sort of temporary, by the time we get the results of this survey, hopefully it'll be less of an issue. And I think the, you know, as as Jeremy said, the most appropriate way to to deal with that when you see it is probably contact the. Businesses that are employing the people or contracting the people who are not complying and get them to try and enforce it. Or go through the county. The the fire safety thing. You know, I I think would be an interesting one, but I think we've got the other category under there. So I think if that is an issue that people are concerned with, then we'll probably hear about it as long as we keep that other. In there, and because we don't directly enforce that ourselves as the fire marshal, I think it's. It's probably better to keep it concise and leave that one off. And I think the the cigarettes and smoking one, the main issue there is really fire safety and again. It's either, you know, getting the employers to. Make sure that their employees are not doing fire unsafe things, or it's a fire marshal issue. So again, I think having the other on there, issues like that can can get filled in.
May I make a comment to the chair? Just to put Laura on the spot, sorry, Laura, I don't recall whether or not in any of the. Requirements we have for construction projects, whether we say anything specifically around smoking. And that might be a way to to think about this. We obviously have a variety of things that we require someone to do as it relates to their construction projects and. I don't know if you can or can't say those things, but that might be a place to look.
Could certainly update our like our preconstruction materials and things like that to raise it as an issue. So we could put it on the list of something for staff to go over with contractors before significant permits are issued. That it's a priority of the town, so there wouldn't be any enforcement, but there would be education and information.
Thank you.
This is just a direction item?
Yeah, this is direction on. The questions within the. Survey, then we would conduct it and bring back the results at a future date.
Okay, you've got enough from us right now?
I think so, yeah, and Sarah, I'll contact you soon. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Hey, Laura.
Bye, Laura.
Bye, Laura.
All righty, item number eleven is a forming a council, actually replacing one person on the website, refresh council subcommittee.
Not to ever contradict the mayor, but we could never replace former council member Wangert. The, as you know, the council created a subcommittee to guide the ongoing website refresh, which should be completed in this fiscal year. We're very excited about this. While the subcommittee has completed substantially its work, there will be future questions. That I think are fair to ask under the moniker website refresh, including content related questions as we move forward. So we but very much appreciated Craig and Anne's guidance and assistance during all of this. And we'd like to keep the subcommittee intact to provide the same level of assistance moving forward on the issues I just mentioned. Thanks.
All right. Is there a volunteer? Sarah. Great, you would like to volunteer for this?
Yes, I would.
That is great, so. And Sarah, you are now the official website refresh subcommittee.
And Sarah, I'll have Carrie and or Brandy reach out to you to get you up to speed where we are, the work that's already been done. Just so you have a good foundation for working in this role.
Okay, good, so now we're moving on to our council liaison committee and regional agency reports. Let's start with John.
Okay, the ASCC. On Monday, the elected new chair and vice chair, Dave is now the chairperson and Jane is. Vice Chair. Conservation Committee Judy Murphy gave a presentation for revised significant tree list. That they had some questions about, which I believe it will be going back to the. ASCC at some point after the conservation committee works on it some more, probably to one member. And that one will have to come to us and planning commission and us as well, since it's part of their code. Let's see, this was Kenny's first meeting, he seemed to fit right in, did a great job. Asked the right questions. They went on to the Blue Oaks, discussed the existing planning and development requirements. And specifically questions about the ASCC role in. In ongoing projects in the in the PUD under the PUD. As many of our project, many of our. Our documents in town have some, a few little vague parts, so they're, they're trying to tighten it up and figure out how that best is handled. At this point, they're going to use the. Protocols for other non. Blue Oaks applications says just basically do things like we do rest of town and see how that applies and adjust as we go. Then they talked about coming ASCC priorities, which we'll be hearing about, what is that, the twenty seventh meeting? With committee discussions, they're primarily interested in wildfire design guidelines and. Possibly some discussion about preapproved ADUs. Let's see. And that was the only meeting, I went to the race and equity training, I guess a couple, a few other people were there. And that was, it was interesting. That's all, leave it at that. And that was it.
Thank you, John, Jeff.
Yeah, I don't have much other than I was also, was it on the race and equity training yesterday with John, and I think Craig was on there. Um, and I mean, it's, it's, I think there's a lot of value to being in the room with, in a live room with people for discussions like this, so it wasn't nearly the same as that. That said, I thought they handled it pretty well, I thought, you know, they, they, there's a group of about sixty people and they broke us into these smaller breakout rooms. And you, I mean, they were really asking you to to contribute something to each conversation, and I felt like it was actually. You know, given the the circumstances and doing it online, I actually thought it was pretty, pretty, I thought it was good and I thought it was helpful. So I, maybe we can compare notes on it at some point to group, but I I thought, I thought it went pretty well.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Craig.
Yeah, let's see, I had two way back in December, first one, December fifteenth trails meeting. I have the agenda, but I don't find my notes from the meeting, it was, let's see, what was on there? Discussion of trail work with Howard and winter season and trail closures and all that, there was nothing unusual there. That was pretty much the same as every year in the winter. Discussion of fiscal year initiatives and programs, they will be bringing that forward to us through our budget process. And Stanford Portola Terrace application, they had a discussion of, but without my notes, I don't actually recall all the stuff that they went through. So I'll have to get that from a minute when they come next time. And then there was a meeting of BPTS on January sixth. Let's see, there was a bit of a look ahead to the Stanford Wedge project coming to BPTS. Once the EIR is published and the traffic report element of that BPTS will try and review. There was a discussion with staff, planning staff about how best to do that functionally, to not delay the project. Yes. Essentially being a speed bump on the project, the the idea would be to use BPTS similarly to how we use the conservation committee. To help help ASCC review landscape plans, so the idea is that yes, would. Have an opportunity to review the traffic elements of the EIR once that's completed and then provide their input to ASCC. So BPTS is not acting as a as a gatekeeper, they're really acting as a support resource to ASCC. Because they're familiar with traffic issues and so on, and so they can, they can provide their input to those elements to the reviewing bodies and the planning commission. Nearly winery traffic report and planning, similar discussion there. Accidents and citations, I think I saw an email, I don't know if everybody got it or not. Andy, I think from the sheriff's office put together. A big report going back three years on monthly traffic citations that we've had. The the upshot is in a COVID year, there were a few citations written. And we, he reported in the meeting that while a number of vehicles has reduced substantially during COVID. The number of accidents actually statewide has not gone that much, so I think statewide, there's about twenty percent fewer passenger miles driven in twenty twenty than in a typical year. But the accident rate had only gone down about two percent. So the people who are on the road, because roads are emptier, they're going faster and doing stupid things, seems to be upshot. Let's see, review of a driveway exception they did on a project that has a double entrance driveway. Winnie Hill visitor parking, which seems to be going pretty much the same as usual. Outreach, they're sending, going to be sending out a message to PB residents on the, through the forum. And then there's an item on here that. Directly, the BPTS committees purview, but the chair of the committee had raised to the town manager and me last year at some point. He wanted to know whether there was an official procedure or set of policies for reporting harassment and other issues that may be encountered either by committee members. Or by members of the public at hands of committee members, similar to policies that we have in place for our staff. And so town staff has been working on putting something like that together that would apply, that we could put into the policy, the committee handbook, that is. So that I suspect Jeremy, maybe you have an update on when we might expect that to come to us to go into the committee handbook.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I believe that I'm going, going to bring something, the next meeting, let me just confirm that. Yeah, either the twenty seventh or the tenth, it would come back to the council.
And that was it, that's all I have.
Okay, I have, starting on December eighteen. Council of Cities. Yeah.
Sorry, you skipped Sarah, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah. Do you have anything to report?
Sorry.
You're on mute.
I don't know officially have any committees yet, of course, but I have been doing some meet and greets. I don't know if you want me to update you about the people that I've touched base with. I could do that. Jeremy did a whole bunch of intros to me with, for me right for the holidays. This week I've met with Don Horsley and Chris Heller from his office and and the rest of their staff. The Westridge Association, Woodside Highlands Association. I've met with the Trails Chair, the EPC Chair, Cert Leader, and I joined the Sequoias Meeting. And later this week I have a tour with Mid Penn for a couple hours and am meeting with a couple of the church leaders in town.
Wow, impressive.
That's what I've been up to.
Good. Okay, I, on December eighteen, I attended the Zoom City Selection Committee. Meeting that always takes place at the December Colma Council of Cities. Meeting, but of course, we can't meet in person, so we just did the city selection committee. And there were a number of. Boards and such to vote on, so for the A-BAG executive. Seats, there were two seats available, there were four. People applying, but a few days before the vote, Rick Bonilla from San Mateo dropped out, so then there were three people applying. Giselle Hale from Redwood City, Mark Nigales from South San Francisco. And Carlos Romero from East Palo Alto, Giselle and Carlos were elected. Okay, I'm not going to, okay, so then there was. Ruben Abrika was elected to the Domestic Violence Council that was uncontested. Christine Krolak was elected as an alternate, not contested. Ron Collins of San Carlos and Donna Coulson from Burlingame were elected to the Housing and Community Development Committee. And then there was a Lofca seat available and there were two applicants, but Anne Schneider of Millbrae dropped out. So Harvey Rarback of Half Moon Bay was elected. We also elected someone to serve on SAM Trans representing the Southern Cities. Jeff G from Redwood City was elected. And then there was an election for the TA, the San Mateo County Transportation Authority seat representing central cities. There were two applicants, but Harvey Rarback dropped out, so Julia Mates from Belmont was elected. And then Carlos Romero was reelected for his TA seat, representing Southern Cities. Sue Vaterloss gets another year as Chair of Council of Cities because I think, yeah, I think the last dinner we did was February. And Regina Wallace Jones vs Palo Alto is still the Vice Chair. And then on January five, we had a special meeting to elect Jeff G to the Caltrain Board. Because it's very specific as to who could be on the Caltrain Board, you have to already be on the SAM Trans Board, and there might have been another. Criteria, and we did the special meeting so that he could attend the January seven Caltrain Board meeting. Okay, there was a C-CAG meeting on the tenth. There's a little bit of a, some new, yeah, actually quite a few new members because. With reorg, sometimes people drop out and new ones come in. The ledge committee, this is all old news. But I'll try to pull anything that might be of interest, as you know, the Dems still maintain a super majority in both houses. Wieners density bills coming back, Atkins duplex bill is coming back, so those are both housing bills they're watching. C-CAG, because it's a, does a lot of transportation, is watching the resiliency bills and bonds, stormwater and transportation. We also do stormwater and we also do climate change. Senator Bill, who's been the, excuse me, Senator Bell, who has been the Transportation Chair for a really long time, will be replaced. And I'm not sure who was chosen, but they were considering Josh Newman and I guess Nancy Skinner. And we're waiting to see the COVID emergency response funding. And the budget just came out January ten, I'm not sure if that was in there, I haven't looked at the budget that closely yet. And we're also adding to our ledge policies for 2021, expand access to broadband. Okay, there was a call for projects through the C-CAG Lifeline Transportation Program Cycle 6. And this comes from Diesel Fuel Sales Tax. There's 3.3 million available and this is to improve ability for low income folks. See what else. Matt Fabry from C-CAG gave a very comprehensive presentation on multi-scale stormwater management in the county. And then we had a closed session. Oh no, there was also a draft San Mateo Countywide Sustainable Streets Master Plan Presentation I wrote down here, did not pay attention. And then we did have a closed session to discuss performance review and salary for our ED and we came out of closed session. Sandy got a very good performance review, but she did not get a raise or a CPI. Okay, I think that's enough. Right, Jeremy? Jeremy helps with the performance review. He works with the chair.
Yeah, I've done it three years now.
Yep, did it with me a few years because at C-CAG, there is a count, there's a city manager assigned as a liaison to C-CAG and Jeremy is our liaison. Okay, Express Lanes met on December 11. As I've, I think, mentioned before, they are doing an equity study. Actually, it's probably one of the most comprehensive equity studies for an express lanes that's been done even in this country. So they came back with a tech, and now the tech analysis and what they're doing to engage the public. And so basically they just came back with a lot of data, like who's our target population? How do they travel? It's a small population. It's not well represented in transportation analyses. But basically they're low income, they have limited English, they're usually not white, a lot of single women, transit dependent, and they live in Daly City, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, North Fair Oaks, part of Redwood City, Redwood City, San Bruno, San Mateo, South San Francisco, and usually within a mile of 101. Okay. There are barriers to travel, it might be no car, no credit card, limited access to the internet, disability. And then the reason they're not walking or riding bikes is because they're so close to 101. There's a lot of pollution and it's very congested. And they also feel it's unsafe to walk or bike in that area. And they're traveling to and from the three county area, San Francisco, San Mateo, Santa Clara. And their, most aren't traveling that far. They live and work in San Mateo County. The pedestrian injuries hotspot is Redwood City, North Fair Oaks. The bicycle injuries hotspot is Redwood City, North Fair Oaks. Then there was a, you know, the high frequency bus stops, where are those? And then they also talked about their public engagement process. What are they doing? They've done a lot of them. They're reaching out to a lot of nonprofits who work with targeted populations in the county. They've done, and, and they also partnered with the South San Francisco Library and South, and some other organizations in South San Francisco. They've done Zoom meetings for the public. What they're finding is that the public transportation is unreliable, the cost is a factor. Equity, so how could we help? And when we open the express lanes, we hope we will be making some money that we can put partially towards equity. Toll subsidies, more reliable public transportation, sidewalk bike infrastructure improvements, discounted transit passes and just better access for people. Okay, and there was a whole bunch more discussion. And then there was a Fizzler Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District meeting on the 14th. We talked about an agreement with the City of South San Francisco regarding maintenance of portions of the Colma Creek Channel. You know, there's a lot of, well, actually there's some homeless living in there. There's a lot of garbage, there's a lot of invasives. Okay, then we talked about an agreement with the City of South San Francisco for Orange Memorial Park Stormwater Capture Project. This is kind of a cool thing. They're actually installing a stormwater system that will improve the water quality and capture water. Trying to see what they're doing. I think this is one of the first ones they've done. And then what's the other thing? We improved an investment policy for our district funds. We have 32 million sitting around. So we want to keep a million liquid and invest the rest. 32 million, God, that seems like a lot. I wonder if it's 3.2 million. I really should check that. Okay, I think that's all I had. The town manager report, please.
Thank you. So in no particular order. Today, the County Health Department held a public event to discuss the COVID vaccine distribution. There wasn't a lot of new information, unfortunately, so I have nothing to augment other than what you've already heard. If you recall, last month, the town co-sponsored an event with the Sheriff's Office where we had Captain Christina Corpus and a number of the deputies there available to answer questions to the public, it was well attended. We thank Captain Corpus and her team for coming out. Laura and I have been going to a few of the committees over the last month. We've been to Trails and BPTS to inform them of as Craig was saying, their roles related to the Stanford project. And I, I think generally that there's been appreciated, there's certainly some frustration from the Trails Committee that they indicated in their meeting just about process-related issues. And I, I hope that we were able to convey to them that they're on the right track and doing really good work. I have been, as I do typically, once a year, reaching out to the legislative offices just to check in with them. So this is Horstley Becker and Berman. This year I offered to each of them an opportunity to come and speak to the council and all three have indicated an interest in doing so. So I hope to start scheduling those in per their, per their schedules. I had a positive conversation today with the representative of the Department of Insurance of the State of California. As you recall, I had contacted them in regards to a piece of legislation that allowed the Insurance Commissioner to suspend non-renewals of fire insurance in communities impacted by wildfires. And I was a little disappointed in the way that it had been applied in our area due to what, I have no better term for it, geographical oddity around the ways zip codes are shaped to our west. The legislation that the Insurance Commissioner has, it's, it allows allows him to prohibit these non-renewals for zip codes have been affected by fire in those adjacent. So the conversation today was very positive. And I'm planning to speak to the Chair of the Wildfire Preparedness Committee in the next couple of days to see how we can work with the department on ways to improve this legislation and make sure communities that are truly affected by wildfire do get some relief from insurance-related issues. As you know, in a couple of weeks, gas-powered leaf blowers will be prohibited in Portola Valley. We are already getting calls from people who believe that the rules are in place. And so we're just letting them know that there's another week or so. I am anticipating a number of regular calls over a period of time on gas-powered leaf blowers. We're developing a letter that we can send to residences that have been identified that potentially there's an issue just about education because we do expect people not to know that there's a, that the ordinance is in place, but I suspect that will take up some staff time in the coming months. Our annual audit process is kicking off in a couple of weeks with a virtual visit by Maze and Associates. So you'll hear more about that. The, there's a subcommittee of the Emergency Preparedness Committee. And myself and Brandy are going to be meeting with a vendor of a of a virtual EOC tool to demo it out further. We really want to get this wrapped up as quickly as possible and bring a recommendation to the council on a virtual EOC, which we think is critical for continued EOC operations in an emergency. So I hope to have more in the coming weeks and months. As you know, the first meetings based on the application from the Stanford project are coming up to the ACC and the Planning Commission, 20th and 25th respectively. I think I've got that in the right order. We've sent out materials to residents and asking them to, well, first letting them know what's happening and to participate. We're sure they'll be very well attended with many questions, the first of many meetings on the Stanford Wedge project. There's been no response to the letter to A-BAG that we sent last month on the methodology for the arena allocation. I'm not suspecting that there will be candidly, but we haven't heard anything. The fields are under renovation, most of them are, except for the softball field. Howard said to me the other day that this is the mildest winter he can recall in the close to 20 years he's worked in Portola Valley. We'll see what impact that has on the work that we've done. But right now he's anticipating the fields will be open in, in mid-February. So that's what we're hoping to see happen. I don't think I have anything else on my list. That's it. Thank you. Craig?
Through the chair, just to Jeremy's point that the Stanford project is coming to ASC and planning later this month, is, do we have another council meeting before that? Because it would be good to have our liaisons, those committees nailed down before.
You know, the, the old ones can go.
Yeah, ones can go. So whoever.
Unless somebody else would like to.
Yeah, anybody's welcome.
So if you really want to come, then just let us know.
Well, I mean, I, I, it's probably not a bad idea. If you have the ability to attend, this is the first meeting for as many council members to go as possible. So I would recommend that.
They'll probably be lively.
It's on my calendar.
Mary Ann, there's a member of the public that has their hand raised.
Oh, thank you. Christie.
Hi again. I did send a letter to all of you without response regarding liaisons to committees. I've been attending a lot of the committee meetings. And I noticed not always is there a council member there. So if, if we had the newly electeds mid-December, maybe we should do the liaisons to the committee meetings early January. Because these two important meetings coming up are important, meaning the Stanford Wedge. And so I didn't know how you felt about my comment because I never got a response. If, if we bring people on in December instead of January, can we assign liaisons to committees earlier? Because the earlier you know the details of these committees, the, the better it is.
I mean, I could take a crack at that. No. It's a really, you know, I spent a really long time going over the assignments. And I'm sorry, I didn't feel like doing it in December. I was really tired. It's the death anniversary of my child. There was a lot going on in the world. And I didn't start till January. I, I finished it. It'll be on the agenda next week. And there is no problem with the old liaisons covering in January. And they already have to cover in December. So I don't see this as a problem. Now, if my colleagues have different views, I would like to hear them.
No, I think it makes sense to do it the way we've been doing it, especially if we have new council members, they'll be in line to take up new, new, some of the, some of the slots in a more reasonable fashion if, if we do it later in January.
I just noticed nobody was there at the recreation one. And I thought there was some issues that you might want to address.
Yes, that's true, because Anne was off the council. But you know, Christie, we are not required to go to every committee meeting. It is advised, but we are not required. So it's possible that a liaison may miss a meeting. Lots of times if I miss a meeting, I'll call the Chair or whomever, the ASCC, and I'll try the staff and get caught up. But these things happen. People have lives.
Yeah, I think the logistics of organizing and, I mean, there, there are a lot of assignments and, and you know, some of them, especially that the outside the town ones, there's, you know, other, other factors at play in as well in terms of getting, you know, elected to various things and that kind of thing where it's needed. So it's, it's it takes a little while. It's not an instantaneous process to do the assignments.
I have friends on every single council in the county. We have more committee assignments than any other city. Do you, do you think that's true, Jeremy? That's, I mean, I haven't talked to every single person, but I've talked to most of them. And they are blown. When I was talking about doing this committee assignment thing, I forget who I was talking to. I can't remember what city. And she said, what are you talking about? I mean, it's just not done everywhere.
Well, I think we also have more committees compared to most cities.
One of the smallest populations.
I mainly went, meant the Portola Valley committees.
Yes, I'm talking, we have more town committees in Portola Valley. Okay, let's move on to the digest of December 11. Is there anything that you are, want to pull? Okay, let's go to December 17. Oh, the Garland, lovely, number two. Loved it. Okay, December 23. January 7. I'll pull item number four. There's a vacant northern seat on SAM Trans because Carol Matsumoto retired from the South San Francisco Council from, I think she was on there for 20 odd years. And she has held that SAM Trans seat for a very long time. Jocelyn Manolo from Daly City has applied. Enrico Medina from San Bruno. And I recommend that we support Rico. It's an important seat and they'll be, you know, transportation is challenged right now. And I think we need a person with experience and that's Rico.
Yeah, I would concur with that.
Agreed.
Injuries more.
Okay, I don't see anything else. Any parting thoughts?
Happy New Year.
Happy, yeah, it has been a really interesting one. And happy Martin Luther King Day on Monday. And I hope that in 2022, we can have our own day of service here in Portola Valley.
Mary Ann, if I could, two, two members of the staff lost a valued member of their family recently. And I don't want to get any specific details because it's not appropriate, but I just, I just wanted to mention publicly that we're thinking about them this week and you know, sending along her thoughts.
Okay, you don't want me to say their names?
No, I don't think it's appropriate, but I just wanted to say something.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Right.
Take care, everyone. Good night.